You don't want to be on defense against the guy in the courtroom.
I guess we should start.
Call them in the order, please. We could stand for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, Madam Clerk, if we could have their roll call, please.
Mr. Jamie Gerardi?
Here.
Mr. Derek Pontletts?
Here.
Mr. Jonathan Moody?
Here.
Mr. Chris Poole?
Here.
Mr. Richard Tenello?
Here.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Here.
Thank you.
And the proof of publication, please.
The items were advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on February 7th, 2024, February 21st, 2024, and March 6th, 2024, and by affidavit of certified mail-in and site posting.
All right. Thank you. And could we have a motion to approve minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from the January 4th meeting.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose like sign. Carries. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody today. We're Pasco Planning, Pasco County Planning Commission. We meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency and we hold public hearings to transmit to the Board of County Commissioners our recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it will be important for you to attend the appropriate Board of County Commission meeting. For those of you who are not familiar with the format of our meetings, there are three sections. We have continuances. Those are items that have been requested by the staff or the applicant to be continued for any number of reasons. It's been our custom to approve those requests unless they're extenuating circumstances. We have consent items, and those are items that, where we have not had any feedback from the public or the staff in opposition. And those items, we'll go through those one at a time. If there's anything on continuance that you'd like to have polled and heard today, please raise your hand. As when we call those out, we'll pull them from the consent items and they'll be heard on the regular schedule. And the last one being the regular items, those are the items that will be fully vetted and we'll hear presentation from the applicant and we'll have requests or responses, questions from the audience. Applicants will have five minutes to make their presentation. Citizens will have three minutes to ask questions about the application and then the applicant will have time to respond to those questions. Or anyone who has requested in writing at least 24 hours ahead of this meeting for additional time, that time may be granted. I think we've had a couple of those.
Mr. Chair, yes, we have two grantings of additional time for item P-11.
Okay, thank you. Before we start the meeting, by the way, anyone who has a phone, probably most of you do, please put it on the silent position so we don't interrupt somebody when they're speaking. And before we start the meeting, we'd like to open the meeting for anyone who's here to speak of something that is not on today's agenda. Is there anyone here that wants to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? Yes. Yes. Mr. Carbala, please come.
Mike Carbala, County Administrator. I just wanted to take a moment, Mr. Chair, just to thank the Planning Commission publicly for the service that you guys provide to our community. Sitting on a local planning agency is, it's a volunteer initiative. You're all busy professionals and you take the time out of your schedule to really look and help make recommendations back to the body and the Board of County Commissioners. So I just want to say thank you for that. Thank you too for the staff and the work that they put together to pull this, to educate you, educate the public, and then educate our board on making these critical decisions that are important for our counties. And I guess thank you too for the professionals and the public that are here too in participating in the process. It's representative democracy at its finest. And I'm sitting in the back too to check on the progress of our new planning director to make sure that things are going well. So I just again, I thank you, I just wanted to say thank you publicly to all of you for doing this work. It is truly yeoman's work and again, it's not lost on us, so thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. We don't get many compliments, so we appreciate it.
Take them when we can get them.
That's right. Okay, so I guess Denise, we're ready.
I'd like to mention for the record that there were two people that signed up to speak in public comment. One was Brett Sharber and the other was Gary Blackman, and none of the two are on WebEx. But I just wanted to mention that for the record.
Okay. And they're not present?
They are not virtually present. You could check to see if they're physically present, but they're not virtually present.
Okay.
Denise, throughout the whole meeting, is there anybody that's registered to speak on WebEx?
Yes.
Okay, so there are other items where we do have to check WebEx?
We do have to check WebEx. However, there is no one on that was registered that is on other than an applicant's representative who is on WebEx at this exact moment in time. And one of the folks that did ask to speak is actually physically present because she's signed in.
Okay.
Okay, either of those two names that we called out, are they present physically? I guess they're not. Okay. So I guess.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission members. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. We're going to start with item PC-2, which is PEG 247775, zoning amendment under the name of names of Thomas Lee and Kimberly and Salmonick. The request is to continue the item to the May 2nd, 2024 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
All right. Next one. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay, go ahead.
Following item is PC-3, that's PEG 247712, a zoning amendment in the name of KD 52 MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development, Muland Co. Liquidating Company, LLC, and others. The request is to continue the item to the April 4th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay.
Item PC-4 is PEG 240179. It's a comprehensive plan amendment, CPAS 2324, Diagonal Road Business Park. The request is to continue the item to a date uncertain.
All right, is that applicant present? Anyone here to object?
And on that item, you'll be sitting as the LPA, as the Local Planning Agency.
All right.
And that is the end of the continuance items.
Okay, do I have a motion, please?
Motion to continue items PC-2 to May 2nd, Dade City, PC-3 to April 4th, Dade City, and PC-4 to date uncertain.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Okay.
Following item is PC-5, it's a special exception, PEG 247767, Hope Youth Ranch, Inc. Hope Youth Ranch is for a special exception for a private school in an R2, low-density residential district. On this item, there are several ex parte communications with all Planning Commission members that included a transportation analysis. Also, there were phone calls with Mr. Chuck Gray, Mr. Derek Pontletts, and if anyone else had a phone call, would you please state it on the record? On this item, there is a modification, and all those communications have been sent to the clerk's office. There's also a modification to condition of approval, number one, which adds that the special exception is for a maximum of 60 special needs students, so it clarifies that these are special needs students. And then there is the addition of condition of approval, number two, which is vehicle shall not queue or park on East Road. Those modifications were sent to the Planning Commission members and they were also sent to the clerk's office. So it comes to you with recommendation of conditions, of approval with conditions as stated.
All right.
Mr. Chair, would you pull that and vote on it separately? I have a conflict, I'm engineer on the project.
Okay.
So it's going to stay on consent?
Okay.
Did you ask for, did you ask for the public comment yet?
Yeah, I haven't yet, but I was going to ask you, does that need to be pulled?
You can keep it on consent as long as you vote on it separately.
Yeah, that's right.
So then, I think you have another item that's going to require the same thing, so you might want to just handle all your consent items individually.
Okay.
To make it easier.
Right.
But you still need to ask if there's public here to speak on five.
Okay, so on PC-5, is there, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? See no one? Okay.
Vote individually.
So let's vote on this one.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion is second, further discussion?
And that includes the amendments to, Mr. Hernandez, written to the record?
Yes.
Okay. The two additional conditions.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Okay.
Did you want to do his roll call or just to prove?
No.
You can let the record reflect that I did not vote.
To move on to item PC-6, that's PEG 7771, it's a zoning amendment in the names of Douglas and Kelly Midling for a change in zoning from an AC agricultural district to an AR agricultural residential district, comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? See no objections?
Motion to approve PC-6?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Following item is PC-7, that is PEG 247763, it's a zoning amendment in the names of Sandra Marie Brown, Stephanie F., and Derek L. Pontletts. It's for a change in zoning from an AC agricultural district to an R4 high-density residential district, comes to you with a recommendation of approval. There is an ex parte communication on this matter with Mr. John Moody.
And obviously, I'll have to abstain from this one.
And that was, the ex parte was provided to the clerk's office.
Okay. So is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? See no objections? Are there a motion?
Motion to approve PC-7?
I'll second.
You'll second?
Yep.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Also let the record reflect that Mr. Pontletts did not vote on this item.
Correct.
And let's thank Mr. Pontletts for doing 60-foot wide lots.
Instead of 40s, 50s.
Item PC-8 is PEG 247702, it's a zoning amendment in the name of Anclot River Resort MPUD Master Plan Unit Development. It's a substantial modification to the Anclot River Resort, under Anclot River Resort LLC. It's from, to go from AR Agricultural Residential District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to incorporate 2.57 acres to the existing Anclot River Resort MPUD. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? See no objections? Are there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Following item is PC-9, it's PEG 24CU13. It's for, it's a conditional use, the name of Word of Life Fellowship, Word of Life Group Living Arrangement. It's for a group living arrangement in an AC agricultural district, comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? See no objections?
Move to approve item PC-9?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any further conversations? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Mr. Chair, we're going to move on to item P-11 because PC-10 is going to require a, an actual presentation and with respect to the folks who are here for item P-11, we'll do P-11 first. And that will be presented to you by Orlando Boras. And on that one, there are several ex parte communications with all commissioners. There's separate ex parte communication with Commissioner Mariano, and all of those ex parte communications have been present, have been supplied to the clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, this is Orlando Boras with Planning and Economic Growth Department. I'll be presenting PEG 247733, Blackwell MPUD. This is a zoning amendment from an AR, an AC district to an MPUD, allowing 321 single-family detached units approximately on 107 acres. And it's located north of Hudson Avenue and east of Coraway and Hazel Avenue. This is going to be the site location, which is going to be on the west side of the county. This is going to be the area map, also location map for us. And this is going to be the context map, and this is a very interesting one I want to show here real quick. We have Hudson Avenue to the south, the subject property, and then we also have Hazel Avenue and Coraway. The applicant will be extending the sidewalk from Hazel Avenue all the way to Coraway. And as you can see, there's going to be three schools over here in the area, and this is going to be the subject property. This is going to be the current zoning districts already mentioned about, I mean, before. And then the future land use, which is going to be rez 3 for the property. And then the applicant is requesting the following variation, which is going to be from LDC 906.1, point D, point 11, street access to adjoining property. I'm going to go real quick to the master plan to show where is going to be this variation requested. Right over here, this is going to be Edwards Road. Edwards Road is not up to county standards and therefore it makes sense for an emergency access, which PEG is in full support. As you can see, this is also the master plan, non-binding concept plan, and it comes with a recommendation of approval to the BCC.
All right, any questions? All right. So is the applicant present?
Good afternoon, Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson, representing the applicant, Meritage Homes. And I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation, if we could bring that up and if someone, do I just pick the forward button, gets me forward?
Is this the application where we have requests for additional time?
Yes, this is the.
Yes, this is the application where we have requests for additional time. The applicant has been granted nine minutes of time for rebuttal.
Correct. So I'm going to try to use my time very expeditiously here on the main presentation, and I know we have requested extra time for rebuttal, but we won't take it if we don't need it. So just briefly, Meritage Homes is the applicant. They are one of the fifth largest home builders in the United States. They are, their target market is really first-time home buyers and startups. They're an important segment of our market for our working families. And they're an industry leader in energy efficiency. They've also won several awards for customer service and for being a good home builder and a good community partner. And that's what we bring here today, a project that we're trying to be a good community partner. You'll hear that we are fully compliant with the Board of County Commissioners PM 26 memo. We actually filed our application before that memo with regarding the lot standards and architectural standards was required, but we are presenting to you an application that is fully compliant with that standard. Again, this is the project location, which you've seen. What you see in the circles here are existing PDs in the surrounding area. And you'll see that we're sort of in a donut hole here. There's development to our east and there's development to our west. And on this map, you'll see the Palm Winds MPUD on the southeast corner. Those are 40-foot lots there, so much smaller lots, and that is approved. Future land use is rez 3. This is designated for. This is designated for suburban development. This is not designated in your comprehensive plan for rural development. Project details Orlando has already covered. This is our concept plan. This was our original concept plan that we submitted originally. We had smaller buffers, we had our parks in a different location. We were not showing any access to Hazel Avenue during our initial application. We knew from our sellers, one of our sellers, Mr. Porter, knew that there would be some resistance to vehicular access onto Hazel, and so we did not initially provide that. However, we did agree that we would provide a sidewalk and we would construct a sidewalk along Hazel Avenue to provide a pedestrian connection to the school to the west. However, after consultation with some of the neighbors, we had a neighborhood meeting. It was quite lively. There were some people there that made it clear that no matter what we did, or what we did for buffers, or anything that we could do, they didn't want us to develop here. They wanted this to stay vacant and rural. However, we had several people who were very thoughtful and considerate and spent a lot of time with us, and we spent a lot of time with them, talking over their concerns. And so this is our concept plan now, where we have enhanced the buffers, including an eighty-foot buffer along that northwest corridor. We did relocate our parks. We are actually showing a full access to Hazel Avenue because during the staff review, it was determined that staff felt that was necessary for us to comply with the Land Development Code. So we are showing a vehicular access onto Hazel. I expect you're going to hear something about that. Some of the ex parte forms that have already been submitted express concern about full vehicular access there. That is not something that we asked for, that we're seeking. So if it were to move forward without that, that would be acceptable to us, but we do, again, want to comply with what the county is asking of us, and so we have provided it. Just some more images of the enhanced landscape buffering that we have offered. And these are part of the conditions encapsulated into buffers and condition nine. And then again, the Hazel Avenue sidewalk to the Hudson schools, that's something we're providing, including the crosswalk to get across to an existing sidewalk. Here's some architectural renderings of what we're doing and how we're going to be complying with that PM 26 standard. We are going to have the larger fifty-five-foot lots around the perimeter and the smaller forty-five-foot lots interior. And we are providing those seven-and-a-half-foot side yards. This is our amenity center and our open space. And then again, our key points is we found consistent and compatible with the surrounding area. We, again, have the larger lots on the perimeter. We're providing, okay, just, full compliance with PM 26, and I think I've already pretty much covered this. So we're here to answer any questions, should you have any. And again, we'd like to reserve time for rebuttal.
All right, have any questions?
I just, I didn't look through the conditions of approval, but that sidewalk with the, where is that located? Which condition is that with the crosswalk?
Located in conditions I just circled, twenty-four. Twenty-four.
Thank you.
So I do have one question, Chair. So I understand from your testimony that you, the applicant, I guess, doesn't care about the connection to Hazel, or that you could take it or leave it, is what I'm?
Take it or leave it.
You're okay either way?
Correct.
Is your commitment to put the sidewalk on Hazel contingent on you having access to Hazel? Or are you willing to do the sidewalk regardless?
Sidewalk regardless, yes, that is correct.
So presumably, if, so what you're talking about is you just wouldn't have?
The vehicular.
Vehicular access, but you still, at a minimum, want sidewalk access.
We would keep condition twenty-four related to the sidewalk, yes. We would want pedestrian, we want to preserve, we made that commitment that we would do the pedestrian connection, and people did appreciate that pedestrian connection and the construction of that sidewalk. We want to retain that condition regardless of what you do with the full access, vehicular access onto Hazel.
If the vehicular access went away, then you would, but you still have a sidewalk going into your project, is that?
Correct.
Is that a sidewalk on both sides of the street or just one?
Just one.
Okay, and then twenty-four B indicates that the county engineer may determine that there isn't sufficient right-of-way to accommodate a sidewalk, and that if that's the case, that any requirement, you'll have no further obligations to construct any Hazel Avenue improvements if that's determined to be the case.
Correct. That was the, that was the condition that we negotiated with staff and on consultation with staff, because we haven't gone out there and done full engineering yet. We think that there's right-of-way, there is, there are dedications to right-of-way along the way. The county's been maintaining that right-of-way. We feel reasonably confident that we are going to have the right-of-way, but what we don't want to do is have a condition that is impossible to comply with.
Is it an issue of that there's not right-of-way, or that there's not sufficiently wide right-of-way?
Again, we still believe that there is sufficiently wide right-of-way. We just don't want to be in a position agreeing today at a zoning when we all get in the field and the county engineer is the one that's going to control this determination. We don't get to come to the county engineer and say, oh, we don't, you know, it's going to, we don't think it works. They don't, we don't get to say that. The county engineer gets a say in that and makes a joint determination, okay, yes, there's a barrier here that we all didn't realize was there at the time that we agreed to the condition.
So then what happens? It doesn't get built?
Correct.
Okay, and then how do the kids walk to school?
We are building sidewalks in front of our project along Hudson, but...
Then they've got to walk in a ditch.
There's a condition to put a ten, isn't it a ten-foot wide sidewalk along Hudson Avenue?
Yes, ten-foot, yeah, ten-foot wide sidewalk along Hudson Avenue.
Think basically what your concern was is that you don't want to go out and have to acquire right-of-way.
Right, I mean, and it's essentially, it's, I think it's less, it's more of the practicality of it. We believe, we have looked at it, our traffic engineer has looked at it, I believe the county staff has looked at it, and everyone is of the belief that this is possible and practical, and that's why we've put it as a condition. But we also didn't want to be in a position where everyone, including the county engineer, agrees that there's some physical barrier that we weren't aware of that would make it impossible to fulfill the condition.
Okay, and that was the nature, I don't think you might have misunderstood my question. You're concerned that there may be a physical barrier to you constructing a sidewalk, not a legal one.
Correct, yes.
When I looked at the map, it appeared that the last, the easternmost terminus of Hazel Avenue might have been easement rather than right-of-way, which a couple lots to the west, it was all clearly right-of-way.
Right, and it's reserved for public right-of-way, but yes, that there's some kind of physical challenge to it.
I would also add that the condition allows the county engineer to grant design modifications, so presumably, given if there's a physical barrier, there may be a way to build the sidewalk around the barrier.
Correct.
Or a legal improvement. He can approve a non-standard sidewalk, basically, if necessary.
Understood.
Okay.
I think the concern is there, and I looked at the street view, there's open drainage, there's drainage ditches on both sides of the road, so would there be adequate drainage if they were to?
And I'm ha-
A sidewalk, but I think a sidewalk is considered to be a safety improvement by the water management district, so one wouldn't need to provide additional stormwater. You have good soils in that area, so.
And if I, our civil engineer, Joe Semino from WRA, is also here, so if there are specific technical questions, he's probably the most appropriate party to answer those questions for you. So if you'd like me to call him up, I'm happy to do so.
Okay.
No, I just want to understand.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't we see what any questions are from the audience and then we'll...
Mr. Chair, I had one more question, I'm sorry.
Do you have another one?
Yeah, condition twenty, twenty-four A, the 225th Dwelling Unit. I'd like that changed because there's going to be kids walking if we wait to the 225th Dwelling Unit. They'll have kids that are in the development, in the houses, and having to walk.
So that's same condition?
Yes.
Yeah, twenty-four A.
Sub A.
So that represents sixty percent of the allowable units, 225.
Yeah. So what would you like it to be?
Well, would it be, I don't know, what standard? I was thinking like fifty or, what do we usually do on that, David?
I don't know if there is a standard.
Yeah.
I mean, it probably differs by each MPUD depending on?
Okay.
The need for the improvement.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't know whether this, are these kids close enough that, I assume that they wouldn't be bused, is that accurate?
Right, they'll be walking.
And there's no sidewalks on Hudson currently?
There is no on Hudson, but there is on the west side of Coraway.
I guess my question to you is, is there another way for these kids to walk to school in the absence of the sidewalk?
They'd be walking in the grass.
The grass of Hazel or Hudson?
Hazel.
Okay.
And then crossing the street of Coraway.
But this applies to the sidewalk on Hazel. Is there any cap or units, minimum number of units to be developed before the sidewalk along Hudson Avenue is constructed?
No, that is...
But I don't think the Hudson Avenue one's going to get all the way to the school. I believe they're only constructing it in front of their project.
Right, there's no sidewalk.
So it's not, it's not going to help Richard's concern.
Yeah.
Eventually, when the county comes and does the rest of Hudson, it might, but the immediate concern will be dealt with by Hazel.
I can certainly speak with my client and we can see if we can...
Why don't you do that?
Speed up the process a little bit.
Respond to that when you come back up.
Sure.
We've had a couple unfortunate accidents with students.
I understand, I understand.
And versus cars.
Anything else?
Understand.
That's it. All right, thank you. Okay, who was first on the list?
First on the list is Mr. Clinton Nguyen.
Mr. Nguyen, Clinton Nguyen.
Okay, we'll call the next person, Kluemer Blackwell.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I've lived on Patrick Avenue since early days.
Name and address for the record.
Yeah.
Sorry?
Name and address for the record, please.
William Kluemer, 10908 Patrick Avenue, Hudson, Florida.
Thank you.
Have you been sworn?
Excuse me?
Have you been sworn?
I don't think so.
So we probably need to swear everybody in.
That was a test.
You passed.
Anybody that plans to give testimony today, if you'll stand and be sworn right now?
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give as the truth self you got? Thank you.
All right, let's start again.
So ladies and gentlemen, we can't stop this building going on behind us, but forty of those acres are all surrounded by two-to-five acre lots. They come in and they subdivide it, they put three acres on, three houses on an acre. She has a good selling point, but it's not her backyard. She doesn't have to drive out of there every day, in and out, or her husband, or her children. So as far as the traffic goes, there's, there's options. You could put a road in from Hudson High School parking lot, right out to the recreational center on Hicks Road, just like you did for 5A out to Little Road. That's available. You would alleviate the pressure off of Coraway. You'd have the people from the east and the south have more choices. You could put passing lanes in on Hudson Avenue, on the right-hand side of Coraway going east. So if you're heading east from Hicks Road, you would put a bypass lane in for the people waiting to turn left on the Coraway, instead of a fifteen mile an hour speed limit sign that did nothing but groom and make more traffic. Leaving Coraway from Hudson High School, you can put a turn lane in for turning right, that lot's still empty and available and for sale. And I think the people in Hudson, Florida, are willing to give you our tax money, you can purchase some property and put that road in going to the rec center. And while you're at doing that, you can also fix the road in front of the rec center because if you ever drove down there at nighttime, God forbid, there's a car or a kid out there because it's, it's not maintained. You need to maintain it. These are other routes, so if this lady wants to put in 320 houses in my backyard, then she needs to find other routes for the traffic. The other routes are available, and us as taxpayers will allow you to spend our money on something useful, and that's useful. We don't need another road coming, another development coming down Hazel, it just makes it a shortcut. There's kids on both sides of the road. It's always been residential, agricultural. Kids are on four-wheelers, kids are on horses, kids are walking dogs, they're out at night. We don't need that extra traffic. I don't want it, I don't think anyone else that lives in the area wants it. So, and then you also have... I said my part.
Can I ask you a question? Are you any questions? So your position on vehicular traffic on Hazel is clear, but why do you feel about the sidewalk on Hazel?
I feel fine about the sidewalk, that's fine, but as far as traffic, motor vehicle traffic, there's too much now. If, if you don't cut in front of these children and kids, and not just the children, but the adults bringing and taking children from the school, you can wait at Hazel and Coraway for fifteen, twenty minutes, three or four times a day. I've been dealing with it since the eighties. It needed, from Hudson Avenue, Coraway, from Hudson Avenue to the high school needed paving for thirty-five years. It took them two days to pave it, but it took them thirty-five years to get there. Why are we last? I've been all over this county. I see new schools going up, roads going up, infrastructure going up, and Hudson gets, I don't want to say it because you'll just be mad at me, you know? Take care of us. We're willing to spend our tax-
You answered my question, I think your time is up.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All you guys and ladies and everyone.
Thank you. I think we've already sort of decided we're not going to drive on Hazel, right? And then already decided?
Well, I think that's a decision for the planning commission.
The next person is Alicia Juanes, and she's been granted nine minutes' time.
I had an email this morning saying that I had edited this quite a bit, so I'm hoping not to take all nine minutes. I'm Alicia Juanes, I live at 10816 Patrick Avenue.
So Denise, she's been granted nine minutes as well?
Yes.
She's been granted nine minutes.
I'll try not to take all that time. Excuse me, sorry. Pasco County's open spaces, vibrant places, becomes less true with each passing day. We are one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation, and we are quickly becoming the laughingstock of car washes, Dollar Generals, smoke shops, and glorified barracks, which is what so many of these new communities resemble. There is no character or beauty, there is very little thought or concern for the surrounding neighborhoods or its current residents who have dedicated to living their lives and raising their families here. All that seems to be important in Pasco County right now is more yield, more money. I have been mourning the peace and tranquility of my home for over six months now when I first learned that someone was going to build on the beautiful forty acres behind my home. Since that time, I have tried to gather information to aid me in trying to stop or slow the intensity of this development. What I have learned is that the system is not set up for any citizen to be able to go up against the county. There are so many rules, regulations, and code to go through. Most of us are not well-versed in this area, so we can only do our best to state our case and won't be able to cite code for you. I do not wish to have a community, especially one this dense, built behind my home. Unfortunately, I have no rural protections because someone drew an imaginary line on a map a mile north of my home. I would have loved if my neighbors and I had been given the opportunity to purchase the property, however, that option was not afforded to us. Surprisingly, the builder in this case, Meritage Homes, has been the most respectful and helpful regarding our questions and concerns to make all of this less painful for my family. I have filed several public information requests, and this is what I found. In the last five years, 289 MPUD applications have been filed and approved, with only fifteen under review for revision, and only two that ultimately withdrew because revisions could not be met. Not a single problem, or excuse me, a single project was marked as denied, so nearly everything is being approved. There are ten new subdivisions being built or approved to be built near my home. They are Emerald Fields, Pine Creek, Legends Point, Serengeti, Belatera, Lakeside, Colony and Fair Winds, the Denton Avenue Project, Palm Wind and Park Lake. These, along with this project, is just shy of 5,000 new home sites within a five-mile radius of my home, with new proposals popping up every day with no mentions of roads being improved, new schools, upgrading utilities, new police or fire stations, all of which should be done before these new communities are built. I also could not be supplied with a sewage infrastructure report. Even after a public information request had been filed, no one seems to be able to answer the question of if the current sewage infrastructure can handle the additional load. The proposal, the proposed connection on Hazel Road is just adding insult to injury. The- The connection to Hazel Road is not something that I should be allowed. Although it is code to do so, not all code can work in practical application everywhere, and this is one of those instances. It is a huge problem for current residents. We all want children to be safe getting to and from school, however, a walking path on Hazel would take up the entire easement of the road. The topography of the landscape will not allow for this. Almost the entire easement is drainage, and none of the driveways have culverts. The easement is currently being utilized by utilities and two- and four-yard garbage dumpsters, where would these things go? Additionally, children would have no safe place to cross Cobra to get to the existing sidewalk that runs down the west side of Cobra to the schools. The extension of the existing sidewalk that already runs from Hicks Road to Cobra Way is a much more sufficient, is, is more than sufficient for children to make their way to school. The sidewalk is a good distance from the road, it is out in a more public area, which is always safer, and it provides a safe place for them to cross over Cobra Way in the active school zone, although a crossing guard will need to be added to this intersection. Also, the school impact analysis shows that the elementary school is already over capacity. This project would push that to a hundred and seventeen percent over capacity and does not account for Palm Wind, Park Place, or the Denton Avenue projects. The traffic study conducted for this project is insufficient. It does not include the intersection at Hudson and Cobra, even though it is one of the biggest intersections, is in a school zone, and is within several hundred feet of the proposed community's entrance. I was told it was not included because it is a vision roadway, which in all due respect means nothing, because this intersection is very relevant to this project. The study was done at the wrong time of year to accurately, accurately depict what traffic is really like the majority of the time, and does not take into account enough of the surrounding development. I have voiced my concerns, and they have been ignored, citing that all the requirements have been met. Perhaps additional, additional requirements should be set in this case. The proposed Hazel connection will negatively impact the current residents living on Hazel, Mayor, and Patrick Avenues. The addition of six hundred-plus cars down Hazel Avenue will make it impossible for current residents to make their way out to Hudson Avenue. It is already extremely difficult to do so several times a day, especially when the school zone is active. This will lead to a line of standstill traffic all the way down Hazel Avenue. Our roads are already used as a cut-through from Hudson Avenue to Kitten Trail, and the connection would just make this problem far worse. We also have additional traffic from the school buses going to and from the Bus Depot several times a day. If you connect, we will no longer be able to get to either major roadway in a timely manner, and may God help us if we have an emergency, because no emergency vehicles could get to us if we needed them. Also, the proposed community's roads will be private and will be maintained by their HOA or CDD. All of our roads are public, and when the addition of six hundred-plus cars inevitably damages our roads, the county will want to put ten-year liens on all the properties to repair them. It should also be noted that a good number of current residents already paid ten-year liens to have these roads paved in the eighties, or in the late nineties, excuse me. So now they can look forward to having to pay all over again, because the new, new residents will destroy the roads, even though they will bear no responsibility in repairing them. We hope that our opposition will be taken seriously, and that any community being built should more accurately reflect the surrounding area, and that there should be no connection to Hazel Avenue or any of the existing roads. Thank you.
Let me ask her a question.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. Please, no pause, no pause. Can I ask you a question about the liens?
About what?
About the liens for...
The liens, yes.
...road construction. I contacted the staff this morning
Mm-hmm.
and asked if there were any active P-VAS, which is for Paving Assessment Program assessments out there, and I was told no, and then when I were asked if there were ever any on Hazel or Mayor, I was told no, and so I'm trying to figure out is...
There are actually residents here that can attest to it, the Cromers and Sarah's family and Amber, who, they are all going to speak. Their families did pay in the nineties for ten years. The roads were limestone, and in order for them to have them paved, they had ten-year liens put on their properties that they paid on their taxes over the years.
I have a list here of...
We don't talk to them in the audience, when you come up, you can speak. Was there a program that predated P-VAS, to your knowledge? I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting she's not telling the truth. I just wasn't able to get the information from the staff.
P-VAS has been in existence since I was here in two thousand and one, so I, I don't know. I don't know if there was a program that predated P-VAS, but it's, it's been a county program since I remember.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to make a, a comment.
Can you hear back there?
Uh, when you started off, and this is just for everybody to, to remember as we're going through these proceedings, you mentioned, you know, there hasn't been a, a way for the citizen to fight the county, or to be able to go against the county.
Not to fight.
Well, but, but to have a voice, to be heard against the county, I just want everyone to remember, it's citizen versus citizen, it's not citizen versus a county.
Okay.
We have a citizen that owns that property that wants to develop it.
Oh, no.
And so we have to make a decision that's based on, you know, we have to weigh the...
The citizen who owns the property is not the actual applicant.
Right, I understand.
So...
But, but that's why I'm saying, you know, their, their property owner's rights and their citizens' rights are the people that are around it, and so we have to weigh those things, it's not something that's for the county.
No, I just say, I just mean to be properly versed. I was given a lot of advice, um, that when I came up, I would need to cite code, and I did do my very best to go through. Like I said, a lot of them are rural protections that don't apply to me, because that ends a mile north of my property. So it wasn't meant as a slight, it was just meant that there is quite a bit to go through, and where you all do this quite often. This is something new for most of us. We've never had to attend one of these meetings before, we've never had to, um, state our case in a way that, um, that is not emotional, that states facts, and that is not citing code, code, I, you know, I mean, I don't have those.
So we, we appreciate your comments, and I understand it's not something you do every day, uh, you know, it's...
And like I said, it wasn't meant for a slight, it's just that it's a very, it's very overwhelming, is the point that I wanted to have come across.
I, I say the same thing, it's not meant as a slight, you know, it just remind, remind, you know, when there's car washes, when there's all these things that are being approved, we have to balance the property owner's rights, and we've said this before, but we have to balance property owner's rights against the people that are around. And so if someone wants to develop a car wash, that's their, it's a free country, it's their prerogative to be able to do that, you know, it's not for us to say, you can or can't do that. So, just keep in mind when we're, when we have all these projects that are being approved or not approved, you know, we have to look at them based on whether it's suitable for the area, whether, you know, there's, it's going to create an undue burden on the people around them, but if there's no legal reason why we can say no, we have to balance the rights of that property owner as well.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Did I understand you correctly? You would be opposed to a sidewalk along Hazel Avenue?
Not necessarily, Mrs., I, well, I had a question, my question was where would the children cross, but it was answered by the attorney in this, in this, Kami, I'm sorry, Kobet, I always, I don't know her last name, I do know her first name.
That's okay.
Um, because I've met with her several times. She did answer the question that they would put a crosswalk there, but, um, the, if they're, no, not necessarily, but I do believe that, um, it's going to be quite interesting to see when the engineer does go. The easement is not large, it is all drainage ditches, none of those driveways have culverts, so those would all be, need to be added. If we do have heavy rains, that drainage is full, all across those. There's utilities up and all, and all up and down that road on Hazel, on this side of the road that they want to use, and it's an, it's more agricultural. So the majority of homeowners have two- and four-yard dumpsters that sit in that easement as a way for them to have their garbage collected. Um, I just, I would be very surprised if it was something that would be feasible. It's a, it seems like a pretty, it's a small rural road. Um, I don't feel that the, the easement would call for it, or the topography would call for it, I'm not an engineer, um, that's just my observations. Um, no, ultimately, if it's found that it could do it without disrupting the residents, of course, I have no problem with children being able to get to school safely, but there isn't an exorbitant amount of traffic already on Cobra, so if they do do a crosswalk there, there would also need to be a crossing guard, because there'd be no way for children to cross safely and to fight with the traffic on Cobra and Hazel Road. It would just be dangerous, period. Regardless, if these homes are put there, crossing guards are going to need to be employed. Just, if, one, if the extension on Hudson goes all the way, it already goes from Hicks to Cobra, that's new, that was put in when they did the intersection at Hicks and Hudson about five years ago. So if that extends, it's, it's not a huge extension, and then they're already proposing that that be twice as large as a normal sidewalk at ten feet, so I think that would be more than sufficient. If it's not meant to be sufficient, and the easement can handle it, of course, I have absolutely no problem with children walking safely to school. But there are plenty of children who live in our community who safely walk to school without the sidewalks now. So, um, our main concern is the traffic.
It looks like the sidewalk's on the west side of Cobra Way right now.
Yes, so they would have to cross through, and that's, that traffic is standstill, and like Mr. Cromer said, if you're trying to get out during any of those active school zone hours, you, someone has to let you out, or you're not getting to Hudson Avenue.
Do we know if there's sufficient right-of-way on the east side of Cobra Way?
Of Cobra Way?
Or second sidewalk?
I wouldn't think so, it's very, there's very, very little space there, which is why I think they chose the west side to begin with. The opposite side of Hazel Avenue has the same problems, I think that the north side was chosen because you don't have any cross streets to compete with, which would be Mayor in that case.
It's funny, because at the north side of Cobra Way there, before you get into the school property, it looks like they have to cross back over from east to west, and it looks like there's a crosswalk.
I, I, that I don't know, my children don't attend that school.
The sidewalk terminates, and then you have to cross back from east to west.
So there are, there are other options, and there are maybe some, you know, it, it might not be as easy to do, to put that sidewalk in for the children.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next person is Amber Tucker.
Amber, if you could give us your name, full name and address, please?
Um, yes, Amber Tucker, 10502 Hazel Avenue.
And you've been sworn?
Yes. I've lived on Hazel Avenue since two thousand and five, I'm also a proud graduate of Hudson High School. Uh, we understand that growth is inevitable, but as a lifelong citizen of Pasco and a taxpayer, I feel that this county is not appropriately prepared or proactive in planning for the growth that we have been seeing. Homeowners on Hazel, Patrick, and Mayor were assessed several thousand dollars by the county to pave these roads. These roads would still be lime rock if not for the homeowners who, who paid out of pocket for this improvement, and I do have the documentation for the satisfaction of lien for the home I'm in now. Speeding has been a problem on Hazel for a long time. The majority of people traveling down Hazel, Patrick, and Mayor are not residents. They are using our roads as a cut-through between Hudson Avenue and Kitten Trail, and do not obey the posted thirty mile per hour speed limit. The Pasco Schools Northwest Bus Garage has an entrance on Patrick Avenue, which contributes a considerable amount of traffic through our neighborhood as well. Our neighborhood roads are busy enough. We do not want Hazel, Patrick, and Mayor connected to this development if it is allowed to proceed. Our neighborhood is still designated as agricultural residential, please respect this and do not allow even more traffic on our roads. The only recent, recent significant improvement that has been made on Hudson Avenue was at the intersection of Hudson and Hicks in two thousand and nineteen, which was paid for by the Penny for Pasco. That improvement included a sidewalk from busy Hudson Avenue to the Hudson Schools complex, where those schools have been standing for forty to fifty years. The other main entrance to this complex on Kitten Trail did not receive any improvements. If residents weren't paying more in sales tax, would we have seen any improvements? In addition to the three hundred and twenty-one houses being added to Hudson Avenue that we're talking about today, eighty acres have been cleared on Hudson Avenue near Colony Road for Taylor Morrison to build homes. Thirty-two acres have been cleared just east of that for MI Homes to build houses. Thirty acres cleared on Colony Road for what I'm assuming will be more houses. Sixty acres at the northwest corner of Hicks and Hudson, that is rumored to be another housing development. Our roads and intersections are not up to the demand for all of the new houses proposed for Hudson Avenue. I'd like to acknowledge the traffic signal that was installed at Hayes and Hudson Avenue, which I think is inadequate. It's a bare minimum traffic light, with no protected left turn for any direction, no added turn lanes, no refreshed pavement striping or painted arrows to assist drivers traveling through the intersection. This intersection leads north to our very busy West Pasco Solid Waste Facility, east to the new Gary Plastic Packaging Company, which touted it would provide five hundred jobs, south to State Road fifty-two, a main artery in our county, and west to Hudson Avenue, where the county wants to allow hundreds, if not thousands, of homes to be built. I would like to respectfully ask that you please consider not allowing this rezoning and development to be approved. If it is approved, please consider our request of lowering the density and not allowing our roads to be connected to this development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Brandemil?
Hello, I'm Sarah Brandemil, I live on, um, 10832 Hazel Avenue. I'm very nervous, so...
We don't bite, we promise. Speak for yourself, yeah, that right?
I'm like, never done this before. Um, so I live on Hazel, and I am two lots from where the new development is coming in, so I am past Mayor on the east side. Um, at the moment, we get one, maybe two cars a month that come down past my house that realize, hey, this doesn't cut through. There's not even a turnaround, they have to use my, one of my two driveways that I have. My husband and I are very worried about, um, obviously, the traffic cutting through. It is true that we cannot leave our house to go out by Hudson Ave, um, four times a day because of the school. Both schools, they start at different times, so it's hard with the traffic. As of now, the cars that do cut through to get to Kitten Trail, um, my daughter walked to school from our house, so very close to where this new development would be, with no sidewalks, um, over by us, it was great, but when she would get down further towards Hudson Ave, the people that speed through to cut through to, since they can't turn left onto Hudson when they leave from Cobra, they will come through the back and they'll go out to Kitten Trail. Um, she would tell me every day that someone's speeding past her, so the idea of sidewalks, in my opinion, is great. I, I'm all for the safety of children, but I am nervous with the size of the easements that we have. Again, with my dumpster, I know that was mentioned, that our dumpsters are on the road. Um, we have a fence that goes all the way up to the top, my son has a playhouse right in the front. I'm worried, um, with the drainage, with the rain, we already get flooded up there, so the irrigation, all of that stuff is just, it's the unknown for us. So I would like to find out more about that. Um, we're very nervous with, you know, three hundred and twenty-five homes, about six hundred cars. Is it going to be a cut-through for people to get past that traffic? Also, on Hazel, there are a few, um, registered offenders, child offenders. I check it for Halloween every year, um, so I don't know having children walk past that, I'm, I just, I'm unsure of what's going to happen with everything, so... Um, I just wanted to speak my concerns to you guys today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Kathy Cromer.
Hi, I'm Kathy Cromer, and I live at 10908 Patrick Avenue, and, um, pretty much covered everything here that I would like to say. My concern is, of course, we know that everything is growing in Pasco County, and there's not a whole lot we can do about it. I am totally opposed to them opening that road on Hazel and using it for more traffic. It's not safe. We sit now, like they said, there's, it's not, we're not exaggerating on the traffic there, and it's getting worse and worse and worse. Someone is going to get hurt. You know, people are, everybody's in a hurry, they're not letting you get out, they've got places to go, things to do, and they're running late. They will really give you a hard time at those, that intersection there, at Cobra and Hazel. I don't want this connected into any of these streets, Patrick, Mayor, Hazel. I think a good alternative, if they would be able to come down Hudson, you know, the extension there on the sidewalk, where you expect these children to be. You're looking for them when you get in that area. I'm, I'm afraid that somebody's going to get really, uh, hurt badly at that intersection, but, um, I am totally against opening that up to any kind of, um, vehicle traffic. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, that was the last person I had signed up to speak, but can we call Mr. Clinton Nguyen again, see if he's back?
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Nguyen, are you here?
Mr. Clint, Clinton Nguyen.
And then there was another person that did sign up to speak on WebEx, is not on WebEx, but I may have seen her in the audience, because I believe I recognized her. Is Judy Crum here to speak?
Judy Crum? She's hiding back there in the back. She's hiding back there in the back.
So I'm Judy Crum. I live at 11333 Pinkus Drive, Hudson, Florida, which is on the other side of the track. So I concur with everything that everybody's saying. I really think that any roads going out, people are going to be upset with. I don't think that Hudson is prepared to take on the traffic that is there now, plus all the additional subdivisions. Plus, you have the Public Works Building that's going to be going up, that is right across from Lakeside, which is going to bring all the dump trucks, all the heavy equipment going to be coming down Hudson. And we just are not preparing Hudson to be prepared for all this traffic. I mean, we already know that there's a problem now. So I'm not sure how we're going to fix it, but we're allowing all these homes to go in, and it seems like we keep chasing it down. So we keep chasing, you know, when we already know there's a problem, we already know there's a problem at Cobra. We live on a dirt road, so, you know, they're wanting to put an emergency exit over there. We do not have water, sewer out where we're at. We cannot get our roads paved because they're private roads, and that comes directly up alongside the subdivision that's going in there. So I know they're putting turn entrances east and west, but they're not going to come down to Edwards. So I'm not sure what that is going to pose, but we have enough trouble getting out of Edwards, the way it is, to go left. And I know with Colony and all the new homes and stuff that they're putting up there, it's going to be a problem. Like they had said, Hicks and Little, you know, down by Lakeside. I think something passed today for word of life to add. And then, like I said, with the Roden Bridge going out there, I think they have like maybe 100 acres or something out there. They're building a huge building out there, and all that's going to move out there. So all of those dump trucks and everything are going to be coming up and down Hudson in that section. So that's, you know, I think it needs to be taken a look at, you know. Hudson Avenue, Cobra, all needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last person signed up to speak. So if you want to call, see if anybody else would like to speak.
All right.
No.
Mr. Jerry back there would like to come up?
We just, we usually don't let anybody come up more than once, so... Unless somebody calls you up. Anybody like to call him up?
Jerry, do you, either you or your wife want to speak?
No. Everything is planned today.
Okay.
Yes, sir, did you sign?
No, I didn't.
Oh, that's okay, come on up. We need your name and address.
Name's Bob Waldo, I'm at 11229 Pinkus Drive. I have just one question that came up about the emergency entrance on Edwards. I think it was, Edwards was called a public road. It is not. It's a egress easement. I own it. I own all the, all the property on the east side of this project. And, you know, I'm just concerned about that being an emergency entrance. I believe the drawing showed the easement on the west side of the road, and it's not. The easement is on the east side of the property line, which is my property. So I, I don't, it's not a public road.
But there, but it is an easement, you said?
There's egress, egress easement. Edwards Road is, I think, a 15-foot egress, egress easement.
Does the owner of this property have the right to use that easement?
The owner of the property, which...
The owner, the applicant, do they have the right?
No. The easement was assigned when Pinkus subdivided the five blocks in the back on Pinkus. There's five, five acre tracts that were developed in, I don't know when, but I've been there for 30 years, so it was before then.
Who's maintaining this easement currently?
The homeowners, the homeowners.
It looks like it's a dirt road, or Lime Rock.
It's a dirt, it's a dirt road, and it's maintained by myself and the other, some of the other people.
So the current, the owner of this property that is seeking this rezoning is not using it and has no right to use it? Is that your...
No. They do not.
Okay, well, we'll ask the applicant to address that.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Just a man in the back.
Yeah.
David Esther, I'm at 11512 Seabiscuit Lane.
A lot of what was said, I agree with. A lot of concerns about the traffic, that's a major concept. I know some of these builders are coming in with small numbers of houses and kind of keeping under the radar so that they don't have to put forth the complete changes in road redirection, but that's part of what I see your guys' job as. You see 10 people coming in on that road in Hayes, all these builders. Where's the plans to further develop the road construction? And as you're weighing that property owner's rights and the other citizens, that needs to somehow come into some discussion. There's, like was mentioned, 10 builders coming in in that area. Those places are not full yet. There's builders that have been there for 10, almost 20 years, and they still haven't filled all their parcels yet. I'm not seeing why we need to have additional housing when we haven't even filled up what's already open. There's further development going in down 19, but they're going to use Hudson and Hayes as that cutoff to 52. They're going to use all these avenues through what used to be private roads that they agreed to donate to the county and pay for the paving to be, so that they have better roads for themselves. And now that's going to be, that's already being used as cut throughs for everybody trying to avoid that traffic at Hudson and Cobra. I'm not saying that maybe we don't have the building at some point, but right now, it just doesn't seem feasible. It doesn't seem like we've built up the infrastructure to handle these new houses. Inagreeant with most everything that everybody said. One of the things I didn't hear discussed was, where's the plans for, considering, you know, have they looked at the wildlife that they're going to impact? Has there been inspection for the gopher tortoises out there? Has there been a plan for that? Have you discussed the groundwater? We're not putting it on the side of the road, like the one just south of this location, is budding right up to a bunch of houses that are already on city water, city sewage. You're budding up in, actually in the middle of a bunch of properties that are on two, five acre, even larger acreage. They all have wells, they all have septic. We're counting on our well water. We have no, if our wells go bad, if it's contaminated by the extra fertilizer and the pesticides and the runoff just from washing people's cars, all that stuff going down into the aquifer, if that's contaminating our wells, we don't actually have access to get to the city water. We can't have an alternative source of fresh water other than bringing it in for ourselves. So is there a plan for testing that water now and doing follow-up testing year after year for quite some time to ensure that we're not having that offset? That we don't need to then, as a county, decide, okay, these people have undrinkable water now? Yeah. And what are we going to do to help all these other properties? I built there to be on peaceful, quiet, five acres, all right? I own the five acres next to me as well. My mother-in-law lives there. You know, we wanted that kind of lifestyle. The people around there wanted that lifestyle. It's, the only thing that strikes me off is they're in the middle of a bunch of properties like that. And there's no way for people to recoup that if they, their wells go bad, if their freshwater all of a sudden becomes toxic. It's foreseeable. There's quite a bit of space there between the water levels. It should clean up, things should be, but is there any plan from you guys or anything you're going to put on them as an expectation of testing and follow-through? And then who's responsible? Who actually has to pay for all that? If my water goes bad, am I going to really bring something in from Kitten Trail or Hudson Ave? Am I going to be able to get access to county water? So that was one of the things that wasn't mentioned. The other thing that wasn't mentioned is our emergency services. I spent last summer 45 minutes on 911 as the third call about trespasser on the property, person that was impaired, making their way closer and closer through three fence lines to my front door as I barricaded inside with my family and a weapon in my hand to protect my family, all right? The whole time, I had every right to go outside and confront this person, but I did the right thing. I called 911 and waited for emergency services. That took 45 minutes to come. That's unacceptable. That property alone, I'm paying over $6,000, $7,000 a year in taxes. And that's with homestead. And I can't get a cop to my door in under 45 minutes. Year prior to that, I had a similar situation, all right? So this hasn't been addressed, so how's the infrastructure going to be in? What's your plan to use the new impact fees to support more local sheriff's office? I think they just put something out a week or two ago, letting you guys know that they are short-staffed, that they don't have enough people to cover these areas. Especially Hudson gets short-changed, them finding locations, them being familiar with the area, actually how to get to my house, you know, down the dirt roads, down the back roads. I think that's all that I wanted to add. The other people that came up here, very well-prepared, I liked what they had to say. I just hope, before you go and just finalize and approve something, you do some thoughtful...
I have a question for you.
Research.
What, you mentioned the use of impact fees to pay for the sheriff. What, what makes you think you can use impact fees to pay for the sheriff?
Well, maybe not impact fees, but it's just going to come out of our local taxes. But impact fees for the further development of our roads would probably be more appropriate. How are we, is there any plan? What are we using these impact fees for?
Yeah, we, you, we have impact fees for roads, but you specifically asked us to use impact fees for funding the sheriff, which that's why I'm asking.
And it's not just this builder, but you've got 10 other builders on the same strip of road.
The question for you is about the sheriff.
I don't know how you guys use the impact fees.
You brought up about the sheriff is what he's asking.
Um, last time I was on the phone with one of the deputies, he said to tell you guys they need more staff. That was his comment to me, rather than come out and support us.
I get the point.
I'm just making mention about it today.
You were asking us to use, the county to use impact fees to fund the sheriff, and I'm asking, what makes you think we can do that?
Like the other lady said, that's not my job. I don't know how, every detail of how you use your funds. I know you do get funds from that. I know you get funds from taxing. I specialize in a different career. This isn't my career. I'm just asking you guys to think about it, and because where would this money come from? Make plans for it in the future, knowing that we're adding in all these homes. We're going to need more police officers in support. We're going to need more emergency vehicles that can get up and down the road and not be blocked at school time.
So are you aware of how much of our county ad valorem budget goes to fund the sheriff?
No.
Are you aware of how much, the increase in our ad valorem revenue goes to the sheriff?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm not, not informed about that.
Before you, it sounds like you're sort of accusing the county of not adequately funding the sheriff.
No, that's not what I meant by it, not meaning to insult or anything. I'm just asking, can you guys go back with your knowledge of how those funds are used? And think about a solution to improve those services in that area, especially if we're going to improve the property.
First of all, let me just, let me just tell you this to get to your questions and your problems. The county doesn't preemptively go out and build roads and put traffic lights in where they don't know where they need to go. So what they do is, every time somebody builds a home, the county, they have to pay the county somewhere in the range of $30,000 per home in impact fees to do all the things you're talking about. Build the roads, put the traffic lights in, adequate sewers, water, all that kind of stuff. These people aren't going to be drilling wells near your property. They're going to be using county sewer and water. They're not going to, they're not going to adversely impact your wells.
I'm hoping...
They're not going to touch your wells.
I'm hoping the stuff that they put on their grass and their lawn and all that doesn't make it down there.
And anything that they build are going to be paid out as impact fees. That's why the county charges impact fees, so they don't have to come out and assess the property owners. And so, you know, I think that's something that maybe you're worried about that you shouldn't be worried about, because we, that's how, you're asking me how we plan for it? That's how we plan for it. We charge the builder. So that he's paying for those things that need, that need to be there to solve problems for the, for the citizens that are, that are building for and for the ones that are already there, so...
The unfortunate thing is, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg problem, because you have...
That's my point.
We try to plan ahead, right? But we don't know, just because we prove it as development, doesn't mean it's going to get built, right?
No, it's going to take them years.
And so we can't, we can't build a road with the expectation it's going to be completed. So the, the impact fee has to be paid first before we can do that, and then it's years in the process to get it built. So unfortunately, you know, even though we know all these projects have been approved, doesn't mean they're all going to get developed, and we can't build infrastructure on the basis that maybe they will get developed and then turn around and maybe they don't get developed. And now we're, now everybody that is a taxpayer like yourself has to bear that burden for, for an improvement that wasn't needed. So that's why it's kind of a chicken and egg scenario with, with regards to developing infrastructure. We, you know, we can't build it before it's needed.
And that's, as I said, they spoke well on that.
And it's the same thing with, to some extent, with sheriff's office, right? Because there has to be heads in beds, as they say. There has to be people in those properties paying those property taxes. That has to translate down through that millage to the sheriff's office. Sheriff's office then has to buy equipment, hire deputies, train those deputies, and that's a process before they come online. So there's always going to be that lag when you have a lot of development going on between when we have the funding to be able to improve infrastructure as well as to improve public safety for it. And I get you, it, it sucks, and I've seen the long times, but it's, it's not really the sheriff's fault. It's not really the county's fault, per se. It's just that lag when you have development going on.
I think it would just be helpful to know if somebody's even considering it.
Robert, do you have any comments about schools?
We definitely are.
Any other?
Any comments about schools?
Well, we probably, we probably need to let, sorry.
You were saying Robert, so I was ignoring you.
Before we let Richard speak on schools, has everybody done asking this gentleman questions, because we probably need to...
Well, I think he brought up the schools, so I want to answer his question.
Oh, okay, all right.
I like that gentleman's idea about the cut through to Old Skipper's Trail, turning that into a cut through and coming up with a better way to filter the cars through there.
Somebody had said, I thought it was this gentleman, but maybe it was another one, about the school capacity.
Yeah.
So can you speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, we work, the county sends us all the developments. We work very closely with the county, communicate with them about all the developments. We're aware of all the developments. We have land on Hicks Road that we, if we need to build a new school, we could do that. We can also build wings on the schools there at Hudson Middle School and Hudson Elementary. We can also rezone some other, the actual zone of Hudson Elementary right now. It's Hudson Primary Academy. So the schools on the west side are less crowded than the schools down in the 54 corridor. So we have lots of things in place. We have, you know, we have portables. I know that's not always something that people like, but a portable is a classroom, just like any other room. So there is, there, we know about the development and we proactively look out for it. So if it's overcrowded, yes, it could be overcrowded. The process too about that is if you, like Derek was saying, if you build the school, if you build another school and then it's half-full, well, now you've wasted taxpayers' dollars, because now it's half-full and you're waiting for the other homes to fill up, or the other school to fill up with houses. So unfortunately, there has to be a little bit of overcapacity at some schools sometimes, and that's just the way it is, because the other option would be like I just said. Okay, we're going to build a school, but then it's going to be half-full or three, quarter of a quarter-full. So we're aware of the development and we track it very closely.
Did we get, this might be a better question for staff, but did we get numbers of expected students for high school, middle school?
Yeah, that's also included.
I didn't see it in the packet, so...
I don't think it's going to be the one development that kicks up the numbers in that school. It's going to be the combination of all of them on that road. I've worked there for well over a decade, so I battled that traffic every, every one of those years. And so if you have traffic, it's a bigger issue there.
And I see this, and I see this, and we have, in some ways, a bit of a flawed system. Under the, someone made the comment that one of the schools would be a hundred and seventeen percent overcapacity, and that only included this development. It doesn't include Palm Winds and all of the others that they cited. And all of these things have a cumulative effect. And I see that constantly in here with the transportation analyses. We don't require in our code for a transportation analysis to take into account other MPUDs that have been approved and are in the pipeline. They apply a mysterious growth factor to the road. And I think that growth, and I see LEs in the back, maybe he'll come talk about that, but I don't know, it's two or three percent and then some seasonal adjustment factor. Try to tell the people in this room that there's only two or three percent more traffic on the road. I mean, we all know it's garbage. That needs to get fixed.
Do you know where they get that growth factor from? Is that a Beaver number or is it?
I have no idea how that comes about, but that's a problem of our code. That's something in the code that's broken and probably needs to get fixed. I don't have all those answers, but I see it. I see it all the time. We've asked that, we all know that.
That's a good point, Mr. Moody. And I just want to let you know, we actually had a conversation with Mike Carbala today about that. And he has told us to proceed with doing transportation planning and looking at the downstream effects of all these developments coming online.
Believe me, I sincerely appreciate that. And I'm sure everybody sitting in this room appreciates it.
And that should be done regarding everything. It's being done to some extent, I know, with utilities, but you know, also public safety.
And I realize the majority of the current staff bears no responsibility for the authorship of that code. That happened by prior administrations and a prior political initiative to change the concurrency system to the mobility fee system. But now we're finding out that the mobility fee system doesn't quite work as well as we were all promised back in the day too. So, you know, I don't know what those solutions are, but I know the one that we have doesn't work. And to your point, we recognize that, but for the moment, we have to work within the system that we have. I'm glad to hear Mr. Engel and Mr. Carbala are on that. I think that's wise, wise decision on the administration's part.
I don't think we have any more questions for you, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question for staff. What is the long-range plan? Or, you know, seeing all the MPUDs that are coming in that area, what are the long-range plans for Hudson Avenue? Is there anyone that could speak to that? Any widening of Hudson Avenue on the long-range plan or anything of that sort?
I was going to ask the same exact question.
And to your point about all the MPUDs, and yeah, we've discussed that before.
The answer is, I don't know. I do not believe it is on the capital improvement plan. And I believe that our county engineer has appined that the level of service there is satisfactory at this time. But if you'd like, we'll check in with it and get back to you at the next meeting.
That'd be helpful because, I mean, when I look at it down on the street level, it does narrow down towards Beacon. It just, I think it's something that there's repetitive kind of question that we heard from the audience about Hudson Avenue and issues with that. So yeah, it'd be helpful to understand what the plans are for that road.
David, many, many, many moons ago, before you were employed by the county, and I was probably a young child, there was a subdivision called Shadow Ridge built just to the north of Colony Road. And the DOT, in its infinite wisdom, blocked all of the left turns from State Road fifty-two onto Colony Road in favor of providing exclusive access into Shadow Ridge. Now we have developments going all the way up and down Colony, going to happen here on Hudson. And that's going to be the main road to get down to fifty-two, where no one will be able to make a left turn. And if you go to the next street over from Colony, that's the one that I got to get out in my neighborhood. And DOT, in its infinite wisdom, has decided there should be a channelized median to access a self-storage unit. So no one from my neighborhood can make a left turn. So now there's a Family Dollar on that same corner at Shadow Ridge and fifty-two that is now a de facto street so that everybody can get to a median opening to make a left turn. I realize that's not Pasco County's fault. That's something the DOT did way back in the day. But I can tell you, as Palm Winds comes online and the other thirty-acre development that the lady mentioned that's just south of, I'm trying to remember the little street that goes over into Meadow Oats, that's going to be a disaster, a traffic nightmare, a disaster waiting to happen. And with the addition of this, and I'm not necessarily opposed to this development, but with the addition of the traffic from this development, because that's, if you look at, that's the nearest way down to fifty-two. That's what's going to happen here. And I don't realize, I realize it's not the applicant's problem to solve that, but there's a lot of growth going on in the area, and these people all see it. And they need to see solutions. And unfortunately, I hate to say this, in my district, I live in this district, our district is ignored. It has been ignored for years and years and years, for many, many years. We're the only district in the county without a county park. And if it wasn't for Commissioner Mariano to fight and fight for actually multiple terms as his time as a county commissioner, we wouldn't have a park there. We still wouldn't have a park. So somebody needs to pay attention to that side of, that quadrant of the county too. These people all pay taxes, and now what we're coming out is we're finding out, and can we recall the lady that said she had her tax satisfaction of lien? I had a quick question for you about that.
No, you have to come up. Because it has to be on the record.
Can you just tell me what, when the lien was imposed on the property? I don't care when it was satisfied, I just want to know when it was put there.
My name is Amber Tucker. Okay, lien bearing the date of September eighteenth, two thousand and one.
Okay. Is there, and maybe, Denise, is there somebody here from the staff that can answer? I mean, because when I asked this morning, the answer was there was not a P-VAS there, but there sure sounds like there was.
P-VAS did exist in two thousand and one, I can assure you. I don't know about this particular, but if it was, if somebody, we're talking about Hazel?
Correct, yes, sir.
I suspect that the only way the county would have paved Hazel in two thousand and one would have been through P-VAS.
Okay. And then the same went for mayor, to the best of your knowledge?
To the best of my knowledge, yes. I do, everything I accessed through-
Especially if there was a lien on our property, because that means that we impose special assessments at the time.
Yes, I understand.
And to clarify, at the time, I did not own the house. My in-laws owned that house. That's why I was aware of the assessing, the paving assessment. But everything, I gathered it from the clerk of courts, public records, every homeowner on the roads in my neighborhood who were assessed.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you know by chance if this, the property owner who is seeking the rezoning, were they assessed for impacts to Hazel?
I believe so, yes.
So they did pay something towards the road?
Correct, yes, to the best of my knowledge, yes.
Well, you would be paid, generally you pay based on frontage. So that would be what, fifty feet of frontage?
Well, okay, so under our new system, under the newer P-VAS system, you actually pay based on ERU, which would take into account how much, how many units you can put on a vacant piece of property. In two thousand and one, I don't think we had the ERU methodology. It probably would have been based on front foot. And so it probably would have been a minimal amount. But I don't know, without having the documentation, I don't know exactly how much they were assessed.
And of course, at the time, the neighborhood had to vote. And the majority, you know, who voted for the paving, so if people didn't want to pay for the paving, they still had to because the majority went in for the paving assessment.
And while you're up here, I'm not sure if we asked you before, but are you opposed to the sidewalk going in on Hazel?
I would love to have a sidewalk on Hazel. Yeah, absolutely. A sidewalk in Hazel is a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think we've covered how to-
And Nathan, there's nobody on WebEx for this item?
There is no one on WebEx for this item.
All right, your motion? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Kami Corbett again, for the record, thank you. Commissioner Moody, just to answer your question with respect to the methodology for the traffic study for this particular development, staff actually was out in front of this and did access, actually make us analyze all of the background traffic plus the two percent growth rate for this particular traffic analysis.
Not other approved MPUDs in the area?
Yes, yes.
Which two?
I will have to ask our- I will, I think, I would like to ask our traffic engineer, who actually conducted the study, to come up and answer that question.
Is that a question for them too?
Can we have your name and address, please?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Ali Artefi. I'm with Lengs and Associates in Tampa, Florida. Yes, we did include actually three MPUDs. It was Palm Winds, Palm Wind Park Lake, and also Meritage Family Trail, which was pending at the time, but we did include it. So it's much more than two percent.
Okay.
So what-
But that's not normal, correct?
That is not normal, but then it go back to how we developed the code. And it was big discussion. We took it to our, at the time, we had DRC. And it was decided that they didn't want to make these traffic studies a huge accounting book. Because once you're getting to including all other approved projects, then the question becomes, when you do traffic count, how much of that project already has trips on the road? So somebody needs to keep track of taking projects, trips out of the roads, fictitious trips, and put in, it just become very complicated. And the whole system was that the developer pay mobility fees, and the studies are supposed to work as to warn the county where might be issues. And the issue at Cobra and Hudson is more of a operational issue. It wasn't the intent of these analysis to look at the major capacity improvements. And Cobra is not a major county roadway, even though it does serve the school, but it's not part of the overall vision plan.
So with regard to Hazel specifically, do we have a number on extra-generated trip counts?
We did not include Hazel in our analysis. Our analysis is a worst case, meaning that we had all of our trips onto Hudson. And then later on, it was, they wanted to include Hazel connection. So our analysis is actually worst case, not having any trips on Hazel.
For Hudson, yeah, so you just don't know what-
And what was the level, what was the level of service determined to be
when you analyzed all the developments?
Hudson, the standard is a D. And with all the trips and the counts and converting to peak season, and the two percent is C, based on DOT capacity tables.
You're saying that the standard is C?
D, standard is D, which is, C is much better than-
So you're saying it will operate at level of service C?
Yes.
Okay.
And do you know, to answer the question about future improvements to Hudson long-term, is it always planned to be two lanes or is it some-
Based on the long-range transportation plan, which is going to an update right now, it's two lane. And you have to remember, I don't want to go into a lot of detail of long-range plan, when this was, the long-range plan, first you develop the population and employment estimate. This was done almost six, seven years ago, the data for the LRTB. And then you develop the plan based on the growth. At the time, I don't believe we had all these MPUDs coming in. So when next time the LRTB is being developed, you will have to consider these projects. And hopefully, the residents will have, be more active in commenting on the LRTB and making sure Hudson gets on the book for improvement.
Did you say that's being updated right now, the LRTB?
It's going through update right now.
Okay.
So do you have a number on the additional peak trips on Hudson Avenue then? It's going to be generated?
Additional based on this project, for this project. So a project traffic is approximately one sixty, one sixty, about three hundred twenty peak hour on both directions.
Okay, so about evenly divided east-west?
Yes, yes.
So can I ask another question? I get your point about the LRTB. My only slight concern is we're asking for right-of-way reservation of fifty-seven feet from center line, which, isn't that our two-lane cross-section?
I don't recall what's the right-of-way width is required.
Does anybody from staff know whether that's based on a two-lane? Fifty-seven feet, because that's a hundred and-
Fourteen.
Fourteen feet, is that our two-lane cross-section or a four-lane cross-section?
Two.
I'll take an answer from anybody that knows. Your already, do you know?
Yeah, it sounds like a four-lane to me, but it could be wrong.
It's a-
It's a two-lane?
I'm sorry. Typically, the two-foot cross-section in the urban areas is going to be eighty feet. So one fourteen would sound to me like a four-lane cross-section.
Okay, so we have reserved enough right-of-way. If the LRTB ends up showing it needs to be four lanes, they're providing enough right-of-way that we, they could accommodate it, is what I'm hearing.
That sounds right.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to ask Mr. Joe Semino from WRA to come up and address several of the issues relating to Hazel Avenue, Edwards, and some of the other issues.
Good afternoon, everyone. Joe Semino with WR Engineering, one-two-three-six-three Hampton Park Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-two-four. Quickly on Hazel. I've sat at many a table with residents, with staff, with the developer, and somebody pulls out a magic marker and draws a big line on that down a road and said, "Let's put a sidewalk here," and suddenly it solves a lot of problems, and that's great. But as the engineer, I always have to jump up and say, "Wait a minute, we got topo, we got ditches, we got all kinds of stuff." So I have to be the downer there. So Mr. Onis described it perfectly. We've got topo, we've got trash cans, we've got mailboxes. So when it looked like we were going down this road, I immediately said, "We need a route survey." So Meritage went out and got a route survey immediately. We got that back. The topo is not as challenging as we thought. The good thing is, the situation lines up similar to Cobra in terms of right-of-way width and space between the road and the right-of-way. We knew you guys put a sidewalk on Cobra, so we called up project management and had a big teams meeting with them and pulled open the plans to Cobra and looked at how your project management department worked out some of the bugs along that. So we basically have that as our go-to of all the ways we're going to address some of the little nooks and crannies in topo and swale issues. So we are very much on top of that. Mr. Onis was absolutely correct. It is going to be challenging, but not by any means insurmountable at all. The emergency access onto Edwards, I just learned about seventeen minutes ago, we don't have access to it according to not being able to use that easement. I don't know if you need to for fire truck access. Because the road is right on the property line, we actually don't need to physically build anything onto that property, just stub out to it. So if we learn that a fire truck actually needs an easement to get there, that's fine because that emergency access was on there because, recall, our original map did not have an access to Hazel. If we're mandated to put an access to Hazel, we don't even need an emergency access anymore. If we don't have to put a full vehicular access to Hazel, we can easily put the emergency access over there. So if it doesn't work out that we have access, we have multiple options. So if it doesn't work out that we have access, we have multiple options. Wildlife, a gentleman.
But before we leave the point on Edwards, I guess I'd like, I mean, with all due respect to that gentleman, he's not an attorney, I mean, have you all looked at whether you do have the legal right to use Edward? I mean, it seems odd to me that there's this road adjacent to your property that you have no right of access whatsoever. Are you positive you don't have the right to use the easement?
I think we're being told we don't, I haven't looked into the.
Can I hear from your attorney on that issue? Because I.
I would say it's not positive that there's not an access easement, there's not an access, a specific access easement benefiting the property, but there is public access. So it's, it's, there's an ingress and egress easement that, for the public there. So it's not specifically an easement on title that benefits that property, but there, I would not stand here to say, today, and say, "No, there's absolutely no right to use it whatsoever."
So you're saying that that ingress, egress easement is granted to the public?
Correct.
Okay, so there is a public right to use it, though?
I, based on my preliminary investigation of it, yes.
What is a preliminary investigation?
This is just something that was raised to me very recently. So based on what I've looked at so far, I know that it is not, there is not a specific access easement that benefits.
Are these easements granted by some deed conveying to individual property owners?
Yes, deeds with reservations. Correct. But there's not any, like, if you pulled our title commitment, it doesn't say you have at, you know, pursuant to, "Oh, our book and page, you have, you, Blackwell Property, have access rights over this other property," but there is an easement there.
An easement in favor of the public?
Correct.
Not just to those individual property owners?
Correct.
Well, if there's an easement in favor of the public, I think certainly a fire truck or a police officer could use it. So, but I haven't seen all this documentation you're talking about. The gentleman's asserting, I don't know if he's asserting that a police officer can't use it, but it did, it seemed like he was asserting it, but I guess we can ask him for that clarification. But your, is, I guess my question is, based on what you've investigated so far, do you think it can legally be used for emergency access?
We believe so, yes.
Okay. Answer is my question.
Okay.
Back to the list here, just trying to make sure we address everyone's concerns. Wildlife, I, we talk about this on every project. In order to submit our first round of construction plans, we need to submit a wildlife survey in order to get this MPUD through. There was a wildlife survey submitted 90 days prior to construction, a new wildlife survey needs to be submitted, anything that's threatened and endangered, has special requirements, gopher tortoises will need to be relocated, all sorts of different types of birds, depending on what type of bird is there, could alter construction schedule, require additional monitoring, so that's all plugged into the code. Groundwater, good question, we're surround, we're, there's wells surrounded us. The Wellhead Protection Ordinance says all sorts of things you are not allowed to do on this property, none of which we are doing, but the Wellhead Protection Ordinance also does make, specifically say that if you're, if you're designing and permitting ponds in accordance with state rules, i.e. swift mud rules, county rules, you are, you are okay to do that in this area. It's basically a presumptive criteria that if you do that right, you won't harm the groundwater. Because those permittings take into account, are you breaching the aquifer, how close are you to the aquifer? So all that will take, be taken into account during construction plan review. There was a question about proximity to fire stations, I just quickly looked it up, fire station 10, eight minutes away, four and a half miles west, 119. Just wanted to hit that bullet, and I believe that was everything you wanted me to answer.
All right, thank you.
Joe, while you're up here, can you answer, where, where did the connection to Hazel come up? Or where did that come up in the process? It wasn't on your original concept plan, but then it looks like it got added in, and then there's people here opposed to the connection to Hazel. So I didn't know, where did, who brought that up, or where did that even come from?
I learned about it in an email, so we'll find out where that came from.
I can take that one. That came from the county staff in their review of the application, as they were finally review, the upper-level staff was reviewing the application, the request came from them.
Do you two interconnect?
Was it?
Right.
Okay, so it was added for the interconnection, it wasn't added because they needed a second access because of the number of units or anything like that, it was interconnection?
Nick Tarnas, PTO, Planning and Economic Growth. The proposed project has access off Hudson Avenue, and the secondary access to the site would happen at Hazel Avenue. They're proposing other access points, some of which are emergency access points, to help suffice for the code, but the, but the only real secondary access point would be off of Hazel. And the reason why the connection was being made there is because Hazel actually comes to the property line all the way, and the road was anticipated to move in the eastward direction through the subject property today. So based on feedback from the border county commissioners about interconnectivity between sites, based on the land development code and the requirement for connectivity, and based on the facts on the ground, which is a road stubbed out on the property line, there's, there's not even a gap, it's right on the property line. The connection was preferred, at least to start off the discussion and debate the merits of the connection versus ignoring a stub that's right on the property line.
Sure.
So can I ask the question about this a little different way? So there's two different co-provisions, there's one that requires interconnects, which they've actually sought an alternative, a variation to not do that to the east. But there's also co-provision that requires a second full functional access when you reach a certain number of units. Do they have the number of units where they need a second full functional access?
There's a conference just now.
Well, I mean, the reason I'm, the reason it's relevant is, there kind of already is a request to not interconnect to the east, which in theory, if the planning commission were to sort of expand that request to not do it to the west, they could do it. But I don't know if, if they need a second full functional access in the code, that's a whole nother co-provision that hasn't been noticed for variation at all. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I, I think they're, they're checking the land development code right now in terms of the quantity of units that the, that would trigger the second full access point. So if, we could come back to this question shortly.
I'm sure it's 600, I'm just trying to.
Did you have it on?
No.
So Joe Semino is suggesting 600.
Well, Brad's going to come up and.
Confirmed, 600.
Brad knew it off the top of his head.
So, and how many units do they have, I'm sorry, right, without looking back?
321.
Okay, so they don't need a, the code does not require a full second functional access for this project, but it does require an emergency access?
Yes.
So they need one full and one emergency, right, Brad? Okay, so I guess the sum of all this is, in theory, and this is really up to the planning commission about what you want to do about Hazel, but in theory, the applicant could modify the, the variation request they've already sought, to not interconnect to the east, to also not interconnect to the west, and that would be up to the planning commission, though. But there's at least some notice in the record that there was a variation being sought on that co-provision. So I think if the applicant wants, if they wanted to modify their variation request to include not interconnecting to the west on Hazel, I think they could. But it, but I heard the applicant say earlier, is they're sort of deferring to you and the elected officials to make that decision. I'm going to, you're okay either way? Okay.
I think the original plan was to not connect to Hazel, and then you added that because of the staff's recommendation, because of interconnect.
Kami Corbett again for the record, that is correct. And getting back to Commissioner Tenello's question regarding the timing, didn't want to leave that. The condition, we had a little trouble with this condition because we understand exactly your point, we want to make sure that the sidewalk's there when the impacts occur, and we can't tie this to COs, right? Because that gets into whole different legal issues about building permits being issued and how you can hold up COs, so we thought plat. We thought, one idea that we had as an alternative is 18 months from the approval of the site development permit is an alternative. I mean, we understand where you're going, we'll get the site development permit, it'll be another 12 months sort of under site horizontal development, and then another six months before any homes are constructed. So in spirit, we're, we understand where you're going and are willing to talk about what that condition should read.
Right, and then, as long as the intent is there, so that the kids can walk, yeah. And I was thinking, you know, you look at, I'm looking at the site right now, and in theory, hopefully when that road is, or not, not Hazel Road, but the stub out there, that when that, when the, when the road's built and the sidewalks are built, then the kids can keep walking.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And to go back, I don't think my question got answered before, but do we have a number of the anticipated students that are going to be added?
I have that.
This property, this project?
Fifty, 58.
58, so that's.
Elementary.
Okay.
31 middle and 4D high school.
Correct.
Okay.
And just for everyone's knowledge, when this is actually, comes to the county, before it comes to the county, they send us a school site questionnaire, so we have an opportunity to say if we need a school site there. So we make that decision at that time, we also send them a school impact analysis that she's referring to, that shows the impacts.
Well, it wasn't so much the impact on the school, because I know you guys are covered there, it was more for the, because most likely, those trips that would be generated down Hazel by connection through Hazel is going to be mostly, I would think, would be mostly school traffic, school-related traffic. So, you know, it's, it's going to be a smaller portion of that 360 trip count that you guys are talking about for the total trip count for the, you know, so, you know, looking at those numbers, I mean, you might be looking at half that amount, give or take, for the school trips, as, as, you know, not a traffic engineer, but that's, that's my thoughts on it. That's why I was asking that question.
Well, I actually do have a question for the traffic engineer, I don't, I guess I'll ask, I don't know if any of our people are online or not, are they?
Yes, we have several folks online.
Well, I guess I'll pose it generally, which is, there, there was some discussion about a operational issue at, I think it was Cobra and Hazel, is that right?
Hudson is what I believe he testified.
Oh, Cobra and Hudson?
That's what he testified.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out whether the connection at Hazel makes the situation on Cobra better or worse?
Because they have to cross Cobra.
For vehicular or pedestrian?
I guess I'll ask both.
Well, just real quick on the pedestrian.
I just want to make sure that when you all are making your decision, you're fully educated on, not just what the residents may or may know on, but what is the effect on the existing operations at, on Cobra? Because I really don't know, because, the reason I'm asking is because, in theory, if there's interconnection, these folks that live on Hazel can now go east through this project to get out to Hudson. In other words, they wouldn't necessarily have to go to Cobra to get out. But then again, I don't know if cumulatively it's going to negatively impact Cobra or not, I guess I'm looking for the traffic experts to tell me, what is the effect of that interconnection on Hazel, what's the effect on Cobra, is it negative or positive?
Well, I think what he testified earlier is that because the traffic study and methodology was completed prior to the addition of the Hazel Avenue connection, that he did not analyze that.
Well, then I'll ask our, I'll ask our staff, then, because apparently our staff was the one that asked for the connection to Hazel, presumably they must have thought, what is the impact, so does that impact positive or negative as it relates to?
No, because you have to look at where they're going, to get to a arterial or collector roadway, that's Hudson Avenue, so either way, whether they shortcut through Helen, they're all still trying to get to that same place.
Hazel.
I'm sorry.
I'd really like our traffic engineers to comment, or our traffic experts on what, I just want, I want their opinion on the effect of that interconnect on Hazel and other operations.
I don't know, do we have anyone that worked on this project online?
Hi David, this is Essen. You hear me?
Yep. So I can, I can tell you that at the, at the time, there's, there was ample discussion at the board about being sure to make these connections where these connections are possible, so the staff erred on the side of that connection being required, with an understanding that you guys could evaluate it and, and make a decision otherwise if you felt that was appropriate, and Essen can describe the situation.
Brad, I get the general policy on interconnects, I'm not, I'm not faulting staff, I'm just asking, did anybody think about what the effect would be on Cobra?
Essen, can you speak? So David, this was, this was not a, an ask from the, from the transportation planners to connect to Hazel, this was probably coming more from the planners, the long-range planner site, the MPUD planners, asking for a connectivity kind of, better connection, you know, network-wise, and supporting the, what the board has been asking us to do. That is the reason why it was never evaluated as part of their traffic study that we reviewed and approved, the methodology does not address that segment of Hazel ever being evaluated or analyzed. But I believe the, the more relief points that you have on a, you know, project, for a project, or other developments in the area, the more the network can support traffic dissipation, the better I think the performance would be. That is my opinion.
Do you think that having multiple connections to Cobra is better than having all the connection through Hudson, is that basically what you're saying?
Without actually analyzing with this additional project traffic, it's hard to say, that's why I made a general statement.
Probably, we just don't know what the trip generation of Hazel is.
Essen, I think, Essen, I think this gets tricky because you, you have the, all the potential for the cut-through traffic, is what I've heard, and then looking at the road network, it looks like there's a pretty high potential for cut-through traffic, trying to avoid that Cobra-Hudson intersection, and using Hazel, I almost said Helen. I think, that's my concern with the connection.
I'm talking about 130 students, so, you know, I know some of them's going to be walking, but some, some are going to go in a car, so. I think everybody else is trying to leave the neighborhood, probably leave through Hudson. I don't see any really advantage to cutting down Hazel to Cobra to get out on Hudson that way.
That's what I'm saying, they're all trying to get to the same place.
Right.
Seems to me the sidewalk is the main issue, not, not the vehicular traffic.
And if I could speak real quick to the sidewalk, I just want to point out that there is, the crosswalk there is just not a crosswalk, it's a pedestrian auto retro reflective flashing beacons crosswalk, so it is actually sort of signalized in a way, I just wanted to leave that, just you thinking that it was just going to be by itself, but I'm here to answer.
Is there, I guess, real quick, I know there's the, also, there's the condition, I understand, on Hudson Avenue for the 10-foot sidewalk, for the portion of the Hudson Avenue frontage. Why, why is, is there a reason that that's 10 feet instead of five? Is that some kind of county trail plan, pedestrian?
Maybe allow for bicycle traffic.
And, and I guess kind of where I'm, where I'm going with that is, is that they're, if they're willing to put it on Helen, does it make more sense to go ahead and just put it on Hudson? Instead of on Helen in the first place?
Hazel.
Hazel, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
See what you did, John?
Again, different lady.
Yeah, I got it.
Well, I don't, I, I think I was in a meeting where that was discussed, and maybe Joe can.
There's sidewalk to the west of Cobra Way on Hudson already, I.
Correct.
I'm assuming that's a 10-foot sidewalk, but I could be wrong.
Does the applicant remember, because I thought this was discussed about the alternative of using Hudson, or was it not? I don't remember.
Terms of, we are doing Hudson in front of our project.
No, I know of the alternative of instead of the connection to Cobra being, the sidewalk connection to Cobra going through Hazel, doing on Hudson.
Instead of going down Hazel, go down Hudson.
In terms of feasibility and right-of-way and confidence in our ability to execute on the condition, we are far more confident in our ability to execute on Hazel in a pedestrian connection than we are on Hudson, on to the west of our project site. There are right-of-way constraints, the sidewalks were improved, required taking, my understanding, takings by the county, and again, we wanted to commit to a condition that we thought we could execute on, and really, our team is fully confident, much more confident, our ability to execute on the Hazel Avenue connection than we are on the Hudson Avenue connection.
I think it makes the most sense anyway.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to ask the question. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to ask the question, because I noticed there was mobility, or not mobility fee, but there's, it looks like there's impact fee credits for the construction of the sidewalk along Hazel.
Bike pad.
And the bike pad portion, correct. So in essence, you're spending twice, you're going to put it there and you're going to come back later and the county's going to put it on Hudson. So that's, that's why I was asking the question.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, but arguably sidewalks on local roads are a good idea anyway. I mean, I'm not sure it's wasted, a wasted expenditure.
That's right.
It's good for the neighborhood.
I mean, if that was a brand-new neighborhood, we'd make them, but sidewalks.
Hey Joe, while you're up here, the only other thing I had on my list that I don't think you addressed was, one of the folks in the audience brought up the question about sewage.
Yeah, utilities.
Yeah, and you, did you, I got distracted during here.
I think the question wasn't our sewage. I'm actually not sure what the question about sewage.
Right, exactly. So could you address what you're?
I think it was a capacity issue.
Oh, oh, I'm.
Question.
We're not going to get a permit if there's no capacity, so they're safe there. So we only get a permit if there's capacity. And through the review, we haven't gotten any word from utility department, any denials, any flagging of any capacity issues or anything like that, that would be coming up. But again, if something between now and construction plan approval happened, we wouldn't get a permit.
And, and again, to staff, that's something that we normally have in the packet too.
We've had lots of discussion here about whether or not there's capacity at the Shady Hills wastewater treatment plant. Right now, I think utility's position is that there's adequate capacity.
Right.
I think some previous reports have led us to be suspect of that, but they say it's okay, so.
But it's, it's something I would still like to see in the packet to show the anticipated need and then the actual capacity in the area. We had that on a lot of other.
They only do that with the comp plan amendments. They don't get them with the MPUDs.
And it'd still be helpful to see.
It would happen as soon as we submit a preliminary development plan. It's like the first thing that gets reviewed and.
Well, Joe, I think you're missing the point. The planning commission had previously asked for a statement about water and sewer capacity on, at the zoning stage or complan, and complan stage. I'm not sure where we're only getting them on. Maybe Mr. Petos or Mr. Engel know, but I think you're right. We're only getting it on the complan amendments. We're not getting the same information.
At the zoning stage.
At the zoning stage.
Sounds like I need to get that answer before the BOCC hearing and have it very well documented.
It's just, it's just helpful for us to see.
Joe, at one time, we were told there was zero uncommitted capacity at Shady Hills wastewater treatment plant. But there have been further discussions since that have indicated that that accounting of available capacity was from a legacy spreadsheet and it's not accurate and hasn't been adequately maintained. And utility's position is that there's currently more than adequate capacity at that treatment plant.
Okay, well, I understand I need to get a real good answer on that.
Right, yeah, I just wanted to ask you a question on the record, so.
Understood, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else? You done?
Mr. Chair, I know this is very odd, but Mr. Nguyen is back. Would he be able to speak? Mr. Clinton Nguyen? I just needed to ask.
Rebuttal time.
Well, it's up, it's up to the planning commission, but you're going to have to give the applicant rebuttal if you allow Mr., assuming he's an objector, you just got to make sure you give the applicant additional rebuttal time.
No, I, I really don't want to go back and retrace steps. I mean, wouldn't be my wish to go back and do it. I'll listen to whatever the planning commission wants to do, but I think we could, this is going forever, you know?
I agree.
Okay, I think we've had everybody speak that has needed an opportunity to speak, that came here at the appropriate time to speak. And I think we need to hear a motion.
With regard to the Hazel connect, I mean, I, I agree with the BOCC when it comes to providing interconnects where we can. You know, we just don't know the trip generation is going to, what kind of impact is going to be on there, so I don't know.
Well, I think what we're looking at really is, is bicycle and pedestrian walking traffic, not.
So I said.
Well, if it's connected to it, it's vehicular though.
Well, yeah, so.
We don't even know if they have room for vehicular, vehicular traffic.
Well, to be clear, I think Mr. Potlance's point is if, right now, the applicant, what's written up, require, they're, they're, they are connecting vehicularily to Hazel. So if the planning commission does not want to see a vehicular connection to Hazel, you'd have to expand the LDC variation. Right now, there's one under 901D 611. It only says to the east, you're going to have to expand that variation to also be to the west to Hazel.
So moved.
Okay. You have a motion?
Okay, so is that motion, is that a motion to expand the variation request?
The motion is to approve the request with the variation not to make a vehicular, and I mean automobile vehicular connection to Hazel Avenue. The, I would like the sidewalk to be constructed and then if I can get a second, I'd like to discuss my reason why.
Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll give you a second so we can get to discussion, yep.
I said this before, we had a case out in San Antonio where, and staff, I understand the reason. I, I understand the board wants to see interconnection and I think that's, that's great. And when we're out in the middle of the county and we're taking one ranch and connecting it to the next ranch and to the next ranch, and we can plan those so that we're not making highways out of people's residential streets, that's a good policy. But these are people who have lived here. They've lived here many, many, many years. Unfortunately, the gentleman asked if he wanted to speak, who I've known since I'm an adolescent. And I can tell you that he's not anti-growth, because he's made his entire living doing growth. They've lived there. Residents have paid for the streets. They paid for these streets. And they went there to live a quiet rural lifestyle, which is exactly why I live where I live too. And I would be mad as a hornet if somebody all of a sudden decided, well, because you want to build a subdivision over there that you need to connect, use my residential street to create a grid network just for the sake of creating a grid network. I can't destroy somebody's way of life and, you know, and the peaceful enjoyment of their property for doing so. And I think the developer recognized that from the get-go. And again, I'm not laying fault at the staff. I understand that's a policy the commissioners have been pushing for, but I think we all have to use that. We, we have to use discretion when we choose where to make those connections to make sure that we're not going to destroy somebody's peaceful enjoyment of their property. So that's why I wouldn't support it. But I'm all in support, and in fact, I'm very pleased that the developer would actually step up and agree to build a sidewalk for the children all the way down to Cobra. It didn't sound like the neighbors had much opposition to that. I think that's an improvement to the street they've paid for. And that's, that's the reason that I don't believe we should have the connection.
So I do have one clarification question. Did the applicant ask to not interconnect? I mean, I know you created a plan that didn't show an interconnection to the west. Was your original variation request, did it include the west too? So you don't have any objection if the request was modified to include the east and west? Because that was your original request.
Which she said during her original presentation.
I understand that, but I wasn't sure if their variation requests from the code, the code include, I know, I know what they drew. I just want to know if they had requested originally a variation to not interconnect to the west. So in theory, if this was modified to say that you request a variation on both, you'd be fine with that, okay? I just didn't want to make this sound like this is a planning commission imposed variation. It was something the applicant requested that apparently got withdrawn somewhere in the process, okay?
Well, I do agree with everything that John said, and I want to get the discussion on this because, you know, I agree completely regarding secondary access. But as far as emergency access goes, looking at the potential opportunity, and again, I'm not an NGR, I'm just a dumb geologist, but the, the opportunity for emergency access on, I'm going to mispronounce that, Hazel, from a geometry perspective and access perspective seems to be a lot better than coming off of Edwards anyway. So would that be a possible consideration?
Well, I think when Joe Semino came up and testified that an emergency access.
Speak up devil.
To Hazel is, is an alternative.
Would be preferable, maybe?
I would have questions about how that is done and to have some assurance that it remains an emergency access. And all of a sudden, the gate doesn't come down and make Hazel a cut-through street.
Yeah, and I agree completely with you on, on that, absolutely.
Did you, did you want to talk to Joe about something?
I don't.
Now, this is just discussion up here.
There's a motion and a second on the floor.
Well, I mean, so, so it's obviously up to the planning commission, but to answer the detailed question, typically, emergency access means that only a firefighter or sheriff's deputy has authority to open that gate.
Including the resident.
Is, so there would be a gate there that only emergency personnel could open? No. Where we've had some discussion in the past is, okay, does that mean only for the emergency vehicles? Or what happens if there was an accident at Hudson in the entrance to this project? Could, could the sheriff's deputies let people out through that road? But we generally interpret it as meaning if there's a true emergency and we, it's up to discretion of the sheriff's deputy or the firefighter to determine whether the emergency situation dictates the opening of that gate. So there may be a situation where they may actually have to let residents out of the gate and not just emergency vehicles.
Right. I, I tend. That might be an impediment to the residents that live there. You know, they'd have to get permission to open that gate to get out.
I mean, for what's worth. If you're going to make an emergency access only, then that pretty much is the rule. It's only the emergency, only emergency personnel can open, that's the whole point of it being emergency.
Okay.
But I mean, again, it's a decision for the planning commission. You might argue that it might help the residents on Hazel, because if, if it was during the school hours and Cobra was blocked because of school traffic and an emergency vehicle needed to get to their home, at least maybe they could get this other way on Hazel as opposed to being stuck at Cobra. But again, it's up to the planning commission on what you want to do on that.
With regard to the connections, I mean, I'm kind of conflicted, because, you know, we don't want to put an undue burden on the, the people that live on Hazel. But at the same time, I, you know, I see, as a citizen driving around, I see, get into a dead-end road and you got a development with another dead-end road right on the other side and you can't drive across, you know? To me, that comes across as looking like people that don't know how to do proper planning. So I, I side with the BOCC when it comes to making some of these interconnects. I think that makes sense. And it looks like when this road was paved, it, it was stubbed out all the way to the edge of that property line, as the applicant was saying. It, it goes well past the last two driveways that were on that street. So, you know, it looks like it was always intended. You have the, the little red marker signs at the end saying, you know, the road ends right here and it ends right at the property line. So it looks like it was always intended when it was paved, to me, to interconnect at some point in the future. But on the other flip side of it, obviously, it's going to create trips on the road, which is going to negatively impact the, the residents. And we just don't know what that impact is. You know, we don't, unfortunately, because it was added last minute, they weren't able to incorporate that in the traffic study. So we, we can't see what those additional trips are. You know, I'm, I'm looking at, if I did my math right, about 130 students, give or take, between the three schools. You know, yes, some of those are going to be walking down this newly constructed sidewalk we're talking about, but there's going to be some vehicular traffic. And so it's, it's hard to make a decision on that based on an unknown in terms of what the impact for vehicular traffic's going to be. Because I don't, I don't, I don't see any residents having an issue with pedestrian traffic, but it looks like there might be an issue with vehicular traffic. So, you know, I'm generally in favor of the, the interconnect, but at the same time, we're working off the incomplete information, so.
I think we're coming in after a situation has already been created. And that being the case, I think I am, I'm in favor of, I'm leaning toward the consideration of the people that live there now. Therefore, I would support the sidewalk wholeheartedly. And I would, I would not support the vehicular traffic.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of questions or a couple of things. One, did we ever settle on the timing for the construction of the sidewalk?
The attorney had mentioned.
So I think what I heard the attorney say was that he would leave the existing deadline as sort of as a worst case, but, or 18 months from their, the issuance of their site development permit, whichever occurs sooner.
Right.
Is that accurate?
Kami Corbett again, for the record. We were suggesting the 18 months as an alternative, just to make it simple, not confuse people.
18 months from the time of site. From the time of site plan approval.
If I amended the motion to make it 18 months, would that work for the school board?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, let me just suggest that you leave it as a whichever occurs first, that or the plat, because we've had issues with time, timing-based or calendar date-based deadlines, because there's not really an issue. The issue is we don't have anything to hold up.
Right.
Like when 18 months passes, if they haven't done it, there's no approval in the system that we can hold up if they haven't done it. If you, you got to have some approval that we can hold up.
I like whichever occurs first.
So, I mean, I, I'm okay with whatever you want to do in terms of the number of platted units, but there needs to be some approval we can hold up.
Right.
That's fine.
And maybe it's.
Okay, so this is whatever occurs first.
You're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, John.
But what about the number of units? Because 225 is too high.
If it's 225, then we're good with the earlier of. That's sort of where we were offering the 18 months as an alternative to that. So it's still the earlier of, right? So if, whichever comes first, but same idea.
Obviously, it's record plat for the 225th unit.
Okay.
It's not construction of.
Right, it's not construction of, it's record plat.
Okay, I got you, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right.
Which occurs well before they, they build units.
The site development, right?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we have a discussion.
So you've, you've amended that, I'm sure.
I'm not sure I got clear, I don't think staff got clear direction on this. Hazel, I get that, what I'm hearing is consensus that you don't want a full vehicular interconnect. I've not heard whether you guys want anything as far as Hazel being an emergency access or not. There was a suggestion over here that maybe it should be, I don't know if that was part of the motion or not. I think you all need to be clear about what your.
I don't think that was part of the motion, but you know, it's up to you.
Well, I'm not sure if Mr. Moody can even consider it or not, so I guess I'd like to know whether that was.
Well, if we're still in discussion, I, I think that would make a lot more sense.
I'm back to John's motion.
That would not be part of the motion. I feel like the people paid for that street, it's their street. I understand it's county, they've paid.
All right. Okay, so we do have a motion.
Now, I will say that practically, if that's the only barrier between the development and the street and there's a fire, a firefighter is probably just going to blow right through, I mean, I'm just being honest with you. It, in some, it, it's possible that a fire truck would just go right through that and if there's a fire.
No, I understand, I understand that.
Yeah, that's probably better that way, left that way.
Yeah, it's a lot easier to run that delineator post over it is than a big gate, isn't it?
So it may effectively become an emergency access in a true emergency, but, but if you're saying, I guess I'm not sure what the new developer would put on the other side.
Well, so, well, let's.
It's a dirt road on the other side.
Think about this, what happens in the perimeter of every subdivision is a buffer. There's going to be a perimeter buffer, so in this case, there just won't be a road penetrating that.
If they're going to put up a full tree buffer there, and I don't know, I guess we have to just, I'm just, I asked staff, if that becomes a non, well, they have to have the sidewalk through there at a minimum. If that becomes a non-vehicular roadway, are we going to put a, will there be a buffer there?
Well, the sidewalk can penetrate the buffer.
Well, I understand the sidewalk, but, but whether a fire truck will blow through there will depend. Mr. Moody makes a very good point, which is if there's a tree buffer there, I don't think the fire truck's going to go through there.
Well, there's spacing between the trees and it depends where they put the tree, but.
Well, our fire trucks are pretty tough. I don't think they're going to want to go through. Well, our fire trucks are pretty tough. I don't think they're going to want to go through a tree, okay? They'll go through that. They're not going to go through a tree.
Well, there's 60 feet in between trees, I think is John's point, so they could put it, yeah, man.
We're going to have a treeless buffer.
Give them any ideas.
I guess, the issue is that right now, because they've redone their plan to show an interconnect there.
Mr. Tippin, he's got the, he's got his finger on the button.
What's your, what's your opinion? Go ahead, Brian.
Go ahead.
So, uh, yes, unless there is something done here to preserve that corridor, to not have the buffer in that location, it could well end up with a tree in the middle there so that it could never have any connection other than the sidewalk. And I don't know if that's-
I guess, but the, the question is, is there would be a buffer required around the perimeter of the subdivision. I see Denise shaking her, yes, okay.
So, if that is the case, then I don't think a fire truck would go through it. Unless you condition it to be an emergency access.
Yeah, I mean, for all intents and purposes, they could have a lot there with an easement between it with the sidewalk. I mean, so, i-if we take out the vehicular connection.
But, but your motion said you don't want emergency access, so that was very clear. That was the only thing I wanted to ask, was clarification on the motion. So, that's the, the motion is a bike pad connection, only no vehicular access, including for emergency vehicles or emergency connect, or any, any emergency connection whatsoever.
Pedestrian and bicycle connection only, yes.
Okay.
And your motion, your motion included the amendment on the deadline for the sidewalk.
Either, either 18 months or the 225th unit, whichever occurs first.
Okay, thank you. 18 months from the issuance of the site development placard or permit.
And I appreciate the developer's offer. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's have a, a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jamie Girardi?
Aye.
Mr. Derek Pontlet?
Nay.
Mr. John Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Christopher Poole?
Nay.
Mr. Richard Tanawa?
Aye.
And Chairman Charles Gray?
Aye.
Four ayes, two nays, motion carries.
Okay.
Do we have anything else on the agenda, Denise? We, we do.
Yeah.
We have an ordinance.
Denise has a little presentation.
I take a five-minute break.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I think at the very least, we should have had an emergency connection there, and then they can always open it up in the future. That way, with this, you'll never be able to-
I heard, I heard what you said.
Looking at me eagerly.
Well, you know, I promised someone that I would get something done before the end of the day.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I feel bad. No, 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 sorry. Okay, so Denise Hernandez is planning development. We are on agenda, I think it's P 10, PEG 240281. This is amendment 68 to the land development code. We know these types of amendments typically as minor modifications. This is a minor modification to the land development code. These proposed amendments have been on our website for public inspection since about February 27th, with all the proposed modifications. And they were previewed to the horizontal roundtable and interested parties on February 21st, 2024, and actually presented to them yesterday, March 20th, 2024. So, these are, as I said, some minor modifications to the land development code, the first item. And we're removing a lot of legacy information. So basically, the first item is we're removing from the table that where the public notice requirements is located, we're removing developments of regional impact. We're removing developments of regional impacts substantial amendments, an OPC. Development of regional impact non-substantial amendment, an OPC. And then we're adding to that table county-initiated comprehensive plan amendments to CON, conservation, future land use, for those to be published, and county-initiated comprehensive plan amendments to other than CON for those to be published and posted. The next modification that we're proposing is in permit types and applications under 402.1 zoning amendments. So this is removing the requirement to submit a wetland delineation. So our colleagues at natural resources believe that this is something that was requested by the industry, but also our colleagues at natural resources believe that this is too early in the process to request a wetland delineation survey at the Euclidian zoning stage. This doesn't mean that we do not send the request to natural resources. We do. We send the request to them for them to comment, and they do provide comments. And as you've seen, they will continue to provide comments. The next item is, you'll see this in several sections, which is basically, in this particular application, is in mining operating permits. It will also come out in construction demolition debris disposal facilities, and also in yard trash processing facilities. Traffic impact study has not existed for many, many, many years. So we're replacing traffic impact study with timing and phasing analysis, and modifying the code reference to 901.12, because 901.5 is a reserved section, doesn't exist. Again, stating it in the two applications. This next item is actually the really and true impetus for getting this minor modification out to you as quickly as possible. There was a mistake made in 406.1.6 when we called out window signs and sandwich signs as temporary signs. They're not temporary signs, they're just basically signs that are there when the business is open. They put out the sandwich sign, kind of like in the little sidewalk area in front of the business. Same with window signs. Window signs are changed based on different sales that occur in the business, so they were not intended to be temporary signs. They were intended to be other types of signs that don't have time limitations. So we made the corrections in the code to show that. This is another location where traffic impact study is being replaced with timing and phasing analysis. This is in right-of-way use permits, the same with garden plan permits. This next section is RMH, the Mobile Home District. It has not had a maximum lot coverage called out. It also did not have, it was silent on building height. So we've added that the maximum lot coverage is 65%. We also added that the maximum building height for single-family detached dwellings, modular homes, and factory-built homes to be 45 feet. And that's consistent with the change that the Board of County Commissioners asked us to make to the residential zoning districts a few years ago, so 45 feet. And then for manufactured and mobile homes, the maximum height would be 15 feet. And that height was arrived at with consultation with our colleagues over in Building Construction Services. So the next item is in impacts solicited and protected species. So it also removes the mentions of developments of regional impacts. And it clarifies that zoning amendments to MPUD are the ones that require preliminary habitat assessment, not a Euclidian rezoning. So the next section is 901.3 access management. Again, removes the mentions of traffic impact study in both the section and also in the sample problem number one. That's just stricken out. And the mention of concurrency is also stricken out in that section. And then the last thing is in appendix A definitions. We're modifying the definition of window signs, and we're modifying the definition of temporary signs. In the definition of temporary signs, the sandwich-style sign was included in there. We're just striking that out. And in the definition of window signs, we're just making it clearer and simpler. And that is what I've got for you. This is going to the Board of County Commissioners for first reading on April 10th, 2024, at 1:30 in Dade City, and for adoption on April 23rd, 2024, at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie. We are asking that you please find the proposed amendments consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, and that you recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners, and I'm here for any questions that you may have.
So I wanted to say one thing, just as an announcement. So the legislature just passed a law this session that is now going to, assuming the governor signs it into law, it's going to require every time staff does one of these amendments to land development code, for them to prepare a business impact statement. Even if it's a minor fix like this, they're now going to have to do, which the strangle is aware of. And luckily, the Planning Department got merged with the Department of Economic Growth, so I guess they're going to be ready to do this business impact statement. So I'm just alerting you that you may see some amendments come in before October 1 because they don't want to do a business impact statement. But you also may see that the time period to get these through the process may change because they've got to do this business impact analysis after October 1, depending on their workload.
Yeah, and just for the record, this one was not done quickly to get it through before the business impact statement. This is just, you know, something that we really needed to change in terms of the signs is really the main impetus, so.
So it's good for business.
It's good for business, yeah.
Yeah, but that's the kind of ridiculous part, is even if it's an amendment that's currently helping business, they're still going to have to do this analysis.
Impact study. It will be impacted positively. The only one that stood out to me was the height regs on 511.8. So did that not exist before those height?
It was silent. It did not exist. It was basically silent on height.
Okay, so then my next question, then, the mobile manufactured 15-foot maximum. I mean, so I guess you guys consulted with what exists in construction as a mobile manufactured, and there's really nothing built that's higher than 15 feet, I would assume, right?
Well, we consulted with, actually, we consulted with our colleagues at Building Construction Services, and I specifically talked to one of the plans examiners, that that is her specialty, doing mobile manufactured homes. And she actually suggested 10 feet, so I just went up another five feet to 15 feet, just in case there were any issues with that.
Yeah, like, my issue with that is, you know, what if a design changes to where, you know, they want a higher roof pitch for architectural design, and they start manufacturing mobile homes that have a higher pitch, or, you know, maybe a higher ceiling height inside, you know, because manufacturers can always change that.
And our code handles that, because it tells you, our code gives clarification how building height is actually measured. First off, it's measured from the base flood elevation, so it's not measured from the existing grade in a location where it's in a flood zone. And then secondly, it's measured to half, the halfway point to the pitch of the roof. So it's not measured all the way to the top of the roof.
So Derek, I actually had the same conversation with Denise on the telephone about this. And for a mobile home to be towed down the road, it can't exceed a height of 13 feet 6 inches.
Makes sense.
So the question becomes, when we put the mobile home on the site, is how many courses of block is it sitting up on? I could see the potential where there's probably some site where there's, they'll call it topographically challenged, maybe, where you could potentially end up with a mobile home that's above 15 feet. But I think there are probably a few.
There's a couple on Green Key Road, I know.
Well, yes, when you're in the flood zone, your height is measured from the base flood elevation. So this would only happen on, you know, places that aren't in flood zones, where maybe there was some unique topography that required it to be elevated higher than normal on the site. I don't want to say it couldn't happen. And inevitably, the first time, as soon as we pass this, somebody will have, I have one, it'll be 15 feet 1 inch, but.
I would tell you, we've also had some code enforcement cases where people have stacked.
Stacked mobile homes on top of one another.
Yeah, and Denise explained that to me, too. I think it would be rare.
A double stack.
The one thing, two-story.
Bunch of holes to the roof, right?
There's nothing saying a manufacturer couldn't design something like, especially manufactured. In theory, it could be modular and have two different stories.
Well, but our code very specifically distinguishes, to us, a manufactured and a mobile are one and the same. That's why modulators are included in the 45.
Okay, so the modulars.
Yeah.
Well, this says mobile and manufactured homes.
Correct. So to us, mobile and manufactured are, we switch those out.
Modular is manufactured as well.
Right, but a modular has.
I guess the question that I would have.
Has to have engineering standards.
And one, I'm not opposed to the language, but the question that I would have is why do we make a distinction? What if a mobile home manufacturer, an innovative mobile home manufacturer, were to come up with a two-story mobile home, right? They make double wides, we take two mobile homes and we stick them together and make a double wide. I could see where an innovative manufacturer could bring four units and add a second story onto the thing, too. That why make a distinction between whether it's site-built or whether it's mobile? What's, I don't understand, from a zoning perspective, how does that make a difference in somebody's life?
It's not from the zoning perspective specifically, but mobile and manufactured homes have, like, they have a HUD insignia or whatever. And they're, I've personally, and I did ask my colleagues, have you ever seen them where they build them two stories in height? And they're just like, no, that's not how they, that's not how their HUD's certified. Now, if there's a new thing that would happen in the future, that's a possibility.
I'll disagree with the staff about that. That's modular homes. Now we're getting into the difference. Mobile homes are sanctioned by the Department of Motor Vehicles.
Okay, I apologize.
The federal highway.
I apologize.
These are vehicles. These are not.
That's why they're called mobile.
Right, that's why they're called mobile homes.
But could you get one?
And for many, many, many years, and you have a license plate on them.
There are two-level buses, for example.
Correct, there are two-level buses.
If you have a suggestion for a taller height, that's, you know.
I'm just asking, why is there a need to draw a distinction in height?
Because of what David specifically stated, that the stacking of two together, we've seen that before.
That was going to be the flip side of it, is what are you trying to prevent by putting that in there?
I guess my question is, so David, why would one be offended if someone tried to do this?
That wasn't asked Denise's question against that issue, which is, I don't know if these are built, the standard to which they are built is sufficient to survive hurricanes if they're double-stacked. And the reason I know this is because our hurricane mitigation requirements apply to mobile homes throughout the county. They do not apply to modular homes. So I think there is a different.
Can I?
There is a, there's a bigger hurricane risk with a mobile home than there is with a modular home. And I don't know if that hurricane risk is made worse by stacking higher.
So can I answer that question now, speaking as a professional engineer?
Sure.
So if I bring a mobile home that is certified by, and these are certified at the federal level, mobile homes, okay? I bring a mobile home onto site as manufactured and put it onto site, that's one thing. If I attempt to modify that mobile home, I just triggered the Florida Building Code and all of the things that go with it. And I'm sure that the people in the building department, because, believe me, we get the calls at my office about this all the time. People, they go and they decide, I'm going to add on an extra bedroom to my mobile home, and they do not realize that they have just opened Pandora's box, to the point where they'll probably lose their home, because they'll never be able to certify that it meets the Florida Building Code. So I think your concern is somewhat unfounded in that if they tried to stack them on top of each other, and they weren't manufactured and approved by the federal government like that, they'd be under the Florida Building Code, and good luck finding the engineer that's going to sign and seal that design.
I understand that, but I think to your point, it no longer is reviewed as a mobile manufactured home. It would then be a, another type of use. Yes. So I mean, for example, I'm going to give you the example of folks who want to do, want to repurpose shipping containers to be homes, which we haven't seen one yet, but there are a lot of folks who want to do that. So the actual unit stops being a shipping container. It's now an actual home that's placed on a permanent fixed foundation. Right, has to meet the Florida Building Code. So we wouldn't look at it as a mobile or manufactured home.
So your definition of mobile manufactured is what's basically, with the transported version of that, not with modifications?
Something that's sanctioned by the Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles as opposed to anything else?
I mean, I guess that's the question, would the federal or state government even sanction a mobile or manufactured home that's that high?
Oh, I have no idea. I don't design mobile homes for, but.
Well.
I'm just saying, I could see that that would become possible. And I think, to Derek's point, I think what he's concerned with is we don't want to do something that starts creating an inordinate number of variances. I personally don't think a 15-foot maximum is going to start creating a bunch of variances. But at least if someone does need one at 15 foot 2 inches, they can come to the Planning Commission and ask for a variance.
Yeah, I mean, I think you need to just evaluate, per your opinion, and see if you actually get anybody that legitimately needs higher than 15 feet, and they come in with a variance, then you can see if it's an issue.
Yeah, the most likely time you're going to run against that is, like you said, when you're building it up off of grade.
Right, they're put up on blocks, and then some sites, because of the topography, it may require more blocks.
So if you have a 13-foot 6-inch mobile home, and you put a couple courses of blocks, you're already over the 15-foot mark, so.
Is there a number you'd be happier?
Well, a number that's low enough that prevents people from stacking them, which is the problem that they were trying to address, correct? So, but it also gives a little more, so 20 feet?
Well, it's two 10-foot mobile homes.
I could do that.
19 six.
Do they do 10-foot mobile homes? I mean, I don't know enough about them.
What is the standard size of a mobile home? Is it 10 feet?
So, no, the maximum height, when you drive something down the road, is 13 six. So that includes the wheels on the mobile home. Usually, what, the way a mobile home is set up is they back it up onto a site, and then there's concrete blocks and foundation are built underneath the frame of the mobile home, and then the wheels are removed.
Right.
And sometime, and it's all great when you have a perfectly flat site. It's fine. It's not going to be higher than 13 six. It's when you get some site that has some crazy grade changes, and I've seen some of them. Actually, if you go out there in the Highlands, there's some that are like that. And I could see where, if you're standing on the low side of it, it's 20 feet tall, could be like that.
What are your thoughts, Denise? You don't have any?
No, actually, as I stated, my colleagues stated that based on what they have seen, 10 feet is very acceptable. I added another five feet to that, considering that maybe someone would have, like, a structure that would have maybe a pitched roof or whatever. So that's why I added another five feet. So that's why I suggested 15 feet. Because, again, the district is silent, and I know it's probably an exception, not the rule, but I have seen the application of two mobile homes stacked on one another.
What you said earlier, if they did that, then that puts them into the whole business of they're not mobile homes at that point.
Right.
It would, but in this particular case, they were not retrofitted. They just stacked them, it was a violation all around.
Well, then how would one get from one mobile home to the other? You would have to modify it.
They did two sets of stairs.
Ladder?
Yes.
Outdoor stairs?
Yes. I'll try to find it for you.
All right, I understand now that.
To your point, though, right, so that's already a violation anyway, so.
It's a violation of the Florida Building Code, but I couldn't say it was a violation of the building height, because the district is silent on the height.
But you wouldn't need to, right, because it would still be a violation. They'd still have to tear it down or remediate some way anyway. So you don't really need the height restriction to address that anyway.
I don't recall what the, I think the mobiles are still sitting there. There was a reason, but I just don't remember what it was.
I mean, I think the 15 feet covers us. I think we're trying to.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure why we're turning the bend over backwards for mobile homes. You guys want, you see, you. I'm just saying, from a property value standpoint, we, the property values of Pasco County are maximized with modular and.
Not mobile.
Detached dwellings, not mobile homes.
Yeah, that's right.
Exactly.
All right, I'll stop beating that horse.
You're going the wrong way. Maybe six feet.
I would move that we find the proposed ordinance and amendment consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
Very well worded, a second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Fellers like to sign?
Thank you.
You all just want to go home.
Good job, Denise. I can't believe nobody stuck around for you.
Got my sausage in there.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
When you weren't looking, Barbara was hanging in there. I thought she was going to stay around.
I thought Barbara was going to say something, but let me know positive, because two of these modifications were based on some things that she had brought up, so.
I would like to make one other motion before there's a motion to adjourn.
Okay, go right ahead.
And that is that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Commissioners that Mr. Goldstein be commended for his efforts on the Live Local statute this year at the legislative session in Tallahassee. Although his attempts to have the Senate bill modified failed, he did get it through the back, at least a portion of this, through the back door in a budget bill. And Pasco County now, at least for a year, can opt out of the 80% to 120% AMI. Am I saying that correct, David?
That's correct, but I appreciate the thought, but I would be remiss to say that, I mean, yes, I was instrumental in part of that, but there was a lot of people pushing for that. Our board itself, as you know, there was a lot of press about that. And so I appreciate the thoughts, but to say that I was unilaterally the one, the reason that happened, I think would be not totally accurate. We had, there was some help we had from some very influential people in Pasco. It wasn't just me. So I appreciate the thoughts, Mr. Moody, but I would feel comfortable accepting it, because.
I still think your efforts, your efforts are commendable.
We'll call it for your part.
And I'd like to second the motion, anyway.
So since we're in discussion with a second, can you explain just a little bit more than about what?
Yeah, so it didn't, so Mr. Moody's correct, it doesn't affect the land use part of Live Local, which is the part that affects you all the most, because you all see the live local conditions we come up with. We still, that's still an ongoing concern for us, but the tax exemption part of it is, as you all know, our board had significant current concerns with giving a property tax break to basically market rate rents. We're not providing any meaningful affordable housing. These were apartment complexes that were already built, so they weren't even increasing the supply of housing at all. And we were having to give 75% tax exemptions to them, you know, and that impacts funding the sheriff. And, you know, if a guy got up and complained about this project not funding the sheriff, well, the state legislature came in and said, all brand-new apartment complexes don't even have to help fund the sheriff. So as you can imagine, our board wasn't happy. We threatened to sue. Finally got somebody's attention. Mr. Moody's correct, it didn't happen until the end of the session. But we did get some attention at the end of the session, and it did make it into the tax bill. And so it's a provision that allows the counties, if they meet certain criteria in what's called the Schimberg Study, done by the University of Florida. Sorry, Jamie, the University of Florida, not FSU.
They got to have some concessions.
So they do a report annually on affordable housing. That report shows that Pasco County and the whole Tampa Bay MSA actually has a surplus of housing in the 80% to 120% AMI range, which means this whole theory that there's a missing middle, Pasco doesn't have a missing middle. He said we have an affordable housing, it's below 80. It's not. The only counties in Florida that have a quote "missing middle" is Miami-Dade, Broward County, and maybe Palm Beach and Monroe. It's like four counties in southeast Florida. And in my opinion, this entire law should have just been directed to those four counties in southeast Florida and leave us alone.
Yeah, you said that right away.
So it's not perfect, but it does allow Pasco County to opt out, because we currently have a surplus. I'm a little worried what's going to happen in the future if we don't show a surplus. show a surplus, but, you know, for now, we do. And so I think it's a step in the right direction. And we're hoping that maybe next session, we'll get some relief on the land use side, too, so that we're not having to give up our commercial industrial property for housing, for residential housing, that's off the tax rolls. So the fundamental flaw of the law is, I think, that southeast Florida has a problem. And because they have a problem, somebody thought it was a good idea to make that problem the entire state's problem.
The entire state's problem.
Right, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Anybody who's got one on the motion, and you're not allowed to say anything. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose like sign. Don't you dare.
We appreciate your efforts.
Yes, much deserved.
Anybody want a chomp before we leave?
I got one.
We'll make a motion.
I thought you should have thanked me for bringing a chomp.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Pasco County waterways and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 727-834-3611.
So you sign up for Pasco County's Special Needs Registry. That means you have a bed at the special needs shelter, if you want one, right? Nope. Registration does not guarantee you a bed at a special needs shelter. It's simply registration, not a reservation. You should register with the Pasco County Special Needs Program before hurricane season begins. And you can register right on our website. Just go to pascoemergencymanagement.com and click on the Special Needs link. Then, if Pasco County calls for evacuations and you live in an evacuation zone, we will call you to find out if you plan to stay in the special needs shelter. And Pasco County Emergency Management will provide transportation to and from the shelter if you need it. So remember, planning ahead is the best way to keep everyone safe.